2020 Virtual Meeting of the St. Cloud City Council. Once again, tonight's council meeting is being conducted using communications media technology as authorized by Executive Order of the Governor during the current pandemic. We appreciate your patience and assure you that your city council remains committed to providing the public affair and reasonable opportunity to participate in council meetings. We sincerely appreciate your continued understanding as we work through this temporary manner of conducting meetings. Again, to tonight's meeting participants, as the presiding officer, I request that each council member or designated staff member requests that they be recognized by me before speaking. I will do my best to quickly recognize and call upon you. All participants should use the mute function and only unmute yourself when you seek to be recognized to speak and while you are speaking. Please remember that this meeting is being broadcast to the public and therefore we request that you eliminate any background distractions that you may have at your location. Prior to the council taking final action on any agenda item, applicants or members of the public who are present in the public access area will be recognized to address the council. Applicants or members of the public who have pre-registered to address the specific agenda item through communications media technology will be recognized to address the council. And email or written statements that have been timely submitted will be read into the record. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is getting the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allowed three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid reputation of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. With that, I call this council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, is Pastor Jose Sanchez here?
Yes, Mayor, he is.
Could we all stand together as Pastor Jose Sanchez, pastor of the Family Life Church, leads us in our invocation? And please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to follow.
God bless you, everyone. Father, who are in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Lord, we come to you grateful for the opportunity to present the city council. We ask you, Lord, to bless this group of leaders who represent us and give them the necessary wisdom to make great decisions for our beautiful city. We ask for great blessings in the city of St. Cloud for your glory and honor in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Sanchez. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell? Mayor Blackwell? Deputy Mayor Matheny? Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
We have a couple of presentations tonight. First of all, we have the presentation by the Economic Development Division regarding Quarterly Economic Development Report. I believe Antoinette Forbes is going to present that report.
Can everyone hear me?
I can now.
Perfect. I'm just going to share my screen.
Good.
Does everyone see that?
Yes.
Perfect. So, again, my name is Antoinette Forbes. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city of St. Cloud. This quarterly report will reflect the fourth quarter of last fiscal year, so July from September to 2020. Wanted to start off by letting you know where we were as far as new business registrations. We reached 156 new business registrations. That represents 23 in July, 59 in August, and 84 in September. You'll notice the upswing, I believe, is directly tied to the pandemic as people were getting back into the swing of things with their businesses and now reapplying or applying for new BTRs. We also had 42 cases of business assistance. That's where we directly reached out to local businesses to find out what, if any, assistance that we can offer them during the pandemic. That's also part of our best practice model, where we reach out, pandemic or not, to our local businesses to let them know that the Office of Economic Development and CRA is available to offer assistance, and not just financial, but also in terms of resources, referrals, new program information. You also notice through the pie chart here how we have a huge amount in terms of the business demographic in the healthcare, health professional, also in the professional and service industries. I think this is indicative of our individual medical professions which apply for their specific BTRs for their offices. What you don't see is a lot of diversity in some of the other categories which are also necessary, such as manufacturing and food service. So, this report is split up into two sections, the way it was last quarter, which is business retention and business attraction. Economic development is tied to creating new jobs or retaining and expanding existing jobs. So, under the business retention front, we continued with our monthly newsletter where we have approximately 1,500 contacts. We have a 33% average open rate, which is actually 13% higher than industry average. That tells us that more people are hungry for information about things that are happening within the city, and we try to provide them with things that are not just happening directly in the city, but may affect their business and their ability to grow in the city. So, for example, you see the article here that talks about the CARES Act forgiveness program and how businesses can take advantage of it, but also includes information about the commercial facade improvement program that we have available. To the left of it, excuse me, to the right of it is our strategic alliance with the U.S. Small Business Administration. We are considered one of their preferred cities, which means that they reach out to us directly on a monthly basis, and we coordinate different programs and activities that we can do to further impact the citizens and the business community for St. Cloud. One such event that we did was a webinar which introduced them to the SBA to let them know not just the CARES Act and PPP program and the Mercy Bridge Loan Program, but some of the other programs they had available. They also have, for example, CEO mentorship programs. They have surety bond programs available. They have assistance if you're looking to do exportation to international markets. And so, that particular webinar offered people the opportunity to really learn how SBA is here to affect their business in its totality. And our intention is to move forward with consistent webinar educational series for our businesses as part of that alliance. The other thing I thought was important to mention is that the IEDC, the International Economic Development Council, reported that 48% of site selectors use e-marketing to learn about relocations. And so, that's an important thing to know because as we navigate this new normal and figure out how to reach our consumer markets, we need to find the best methodology of marketing. And at this point, it is through virtual platforms such as newsletters and Zooms and such. The other item that we did under the business retention would be our Weave Open Safely campaign, which is in partnership with Osceola County and City of Kissimmee. This was born out of the Osceola Beck to Work Task Force. That collaborative partnership is a marketing campaign which encourages residents to buy local, but it also encourages businesses to perform best safety practices. After we launched our campaign of Open Safely, we are now working on our Growth Well 360 program. That is a technical assistance program that offers businesses a six-month tutorial about how to pivot their operations and learn different strategies in order to maintain business continuity, and that item is actually on tonight's agenda. The next thing under our business retention would be the COVID-19 Economic Recovery and Stemless Plan. Under that plan, that was the grant program, which was considered "Phase 1," which allowed us to give one-time grants to businesses and nonprofits who were adversely affected through the pandemic. To date, we have recommended for award $131,500 for small businesses and $30,000 for nonprofits. It's also to be mentioned that the council so graciously approved the amendment to that grant program, which removed the restriction that alerted businesses that they were ineligible to participate if they received CARES Act funding. The removal of that restriction allowed more businesses to participate in our program and therefore help them maintain that business operations. We also continually provided special alerts to businesses on a timely basis. We are, at this point, about 25 special alerts have gone out, and they range everywhere of informing businesses about different grant programs that are available, not just the city, but through the county or nationally. But we also alert them about special things that have occurred in relation to the COVID. We've also begun virtual business walks, and this is where, it's very similar to boots on the ground, but obviously it's done virtually. And this is where we, as the city, partner with our resource providers in order to meet with businesses one-on-one and find out what their successes are, but more importantly, find out where they're struggling and see if we can connect them with the appropriate resource provider. Those participating resource providers included are St. Cloud Chamber, the SBDC, the SBA, Career Source, SCORE, and several others that I neglect to mention at this point. But we provide all of those resource partners at one time on that call with that business donor in order to really help them navigate through the best course of assistance. We also worked on drafting an outdoor dining furniture grant through the CDBG CARES Act funding, and I previously mentioned the grant program amendment, which we have now started to cut checks to go to those businesses directly. Under business attraction, so I am very proud to mention that we are now an IEDC award winner, the bronze prize for our Bicycle Culinary Tour. That is recognized amongst our industry peers, and there are over 5,000 members across the United States, including Canada, Europe, Australia, New Zealand, and some other countries. So, I think it's important when we say that we are an award winner, we recognize that we are in a category of over 5,000 other members, and we are considered one of the best. Also, under business attraction, we have started trying to stretch our legs and see if we can get some traction on some of our other projects. One of the ways that we've done that is the incorporation of our business attraction newsletter titled Partners in Prosperity. And this is where we reach out to site selectors, real estate developers, and other folks in the industry to let them know some of the great things that are coming in St. Cloud. One of the things that we mentioned, for example, is workforce, because that is always an extremely important feature when businesses are looking to relocate. They are looking at workforce, and they're looking at quality of education. So, in this particular issue, we featured O-Tech students and how they had competed and won in a Skills USA competition. We also received seven leads. Leads are referrals that we get either through the county, through Enterprise Florida, or we receive direct leads through our own marketing efforts at this point, which would be our quarterly newsletter, Partners in Prosperity. We also worked with procurement to institute the hotel feasibility study, which I believe that's on tonight's agenda as well, that we selected a consultant to begin that process, which will help us further navigate when we start attracting hoteliers to be able to provide them some real hardcore data about what potential consumer spending, what's the socioeconomic status, and what makes St. Cloud the best destination location for them to place their hotel. We also participated in the rebranding efforts to offer some insight from a business perspective on how we can help really solidify St. Cloud as a destination location, not just to live and play, but also to work and grow your business. I also neglected to mention that our business attraction newsletter has over 400 contacts and an average open rate of 23%. Our goals for next quarter is to begin working on our website. Our website needs, is always the go-to location for site selectors to find out information about any location they're looking at. They will look at your website before they contact you, and our website needs to reflect the authenticity, the things that make St. Cloud great on there, and it also needs to have some real hardcore data for them to be able to extract. We also will begin our annual business climate survey. That's where we send out surveys to our 1,300 registered businesses to get some demographic information, such as number of employees and years in business, but we also try to dig a little bit deeper and find out their projected sales, their use of marketing. I think that this will give us a great indicator of where we're going in the next year to two years, particularly since the last survey, some of the results stated that a lot of our businesses were not taking advantage of e-marketing or having an online presence. I think that the pandemic has definitely changed that perspective, and that also provides insights for us as staff that we need to provide resources so that they're able to adapt. We also plan to work on leveraging the opportunity zones and to create a plan that would further solidify that market. And then, of course, we still are trying to find the right opportunity to reignite our Bankers' Roundtable and Economic Summit. That concludes my report, and I am open for questions.
Well, thank you very much, Antoinette. You've done an excellent job. Thank you for your impact with helping businesses get back on their feet again, and I appreciate all that you've done. Do you have any kind of number of how many businesses because of COVID may be going out of business in the St. Cloud area?
We only know of businesses that we reach out directly to, but that is in no way reflective of the actual number. Bell's data sets are not yet in yet. I think we'll get a little bit better indication once the census numbers come out.
Thank you for all you're doing. Would any of the, one of the council like to ask a question or make a comment? If not, again, we thank you for all the, oh, Councilmember Trace, would you like to say something?
Great job, as always.
Thank you.
Very good. I'd also like to, I had a group of people who were part of the St. Cloud Latino Chamber of Commerce said that they had reached out to you and that you had just given them a lot of information and treated them royally, and they were very grateful for the insight and assistance that you had given them and what is obviously a very growing, significant part of our community. Thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to our presentation regarding an update on our water and our wastewater. I believe Mrs. Craig is going to present that. Marjorie, are you unmuted?
Ah, there.
There you go. I can hear you now and see you.
Good evening. This is the update for the water and sewer system. So, the first one is a report on the water treatment plant resin and removal from the pipes in our public outreach. So, as you know, we've talked about the three methods of cleaning the pipe, the flushing, picking, and swabbing. And so far, we've, a total pipe that we've cleaned is 182.13 miles, and some of the pipe we've cleaned more than once, up to four or five times. We also are going to give you a little status of where we are in terms of customer surveys from the September pipe swabbing or line swabbing, and we're initiating some additional unidirectional flushing, and we'll be flushing almost 12 more miles of pipe. And here's a list of some of the areas that will be flushed, and we, of course, will be doing the outreach and the reverse 911 and the notices for those customers. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my trusty assistant, Cameron, who's going to talk about the customer service contacts and the unidirectional flushing that we'll be doing.
Good afternoon. Cameron Crandall, Deputy Director, Environmental Utilities. You all have seen this graph before. It's the customer service contacts per week. We just updated it over the past two weeks since the last presentation. And the only thing to note here is just that we are consistent with our low watercolor calls. I think since August, we haven't had any more than two watercolor calls in one week. So, we're happy with the progress. We obviously won zero watercolor calls, but we're doing much better than we were earlier in the, of a year. Next slide, Marjorie. All right. And so, this is the results of our survey from August and September. This is a pre- and post-line swabbing customer survey that we sent out through emails and also we called customers. The first two bars on the left, that shows discolored water before line swabbing. The blue is the August, the red is September. So, you can see that compared to August, we're already starting with a smaller number of customers that had discolored water issues. And then, if you look to the next bars, those are discolored water, no discolored water before line swabbing. That's just the converse of the graph. It's just showing, you know, about 20% of people in September had discolored water issues, and then, so that means 80% did not have issues. So, we go to the third one. It says discolored water after line swabbing. So, we saw a smaller number in September when compared to August of customers who were having issues post-line swabbing. So, the two takeaways are there are less customers experiencing line swabbing in September when compared to August, and it appears that our line swabbing efforts are becoming more effective in preventing issues after line swabbing. And we are continuing our line cleaning, pipe cleaning efforts. This map shows where we are doing unidirectional flushing this week. It's shown in green. Next week is the orange area, and then the red area will be in two weeks. This kind of corresponds with the areas that we've recently line swabbed. As we said before, when we're line swabbing, we're focusing on the larger transmission mains, longer runs. So, we're going back now that we've cleaned the large mains to unidirectionally flush the smaller mains along roads. We're talking eight-inch, six-inch lines just to help move out any sediment or discoloration that was kicked up by the line swabbing. And this is just an update on a map we've seen before. This is water pipes cleaned, ice picking, and line swabbing. This is since February up to our most recent work in September, as you can see up in the top left there where Marjorie's cursor is. That's the 192 Neptune Brown Chapel Commerce Center Drive area we've most recently done.
So, I still would like to continue to request that if you hear of someone that's having a pipe coloration issue, please, we want to hear from them. And to download that new app, St. Cloud Connect, send us a complaint, send us a compliment. Pay your bill. You can look at city council. We've continued to share with social media what we're doing when we're out, when we're doing hybrid flushing, when we're doing the unidirectional flushing, swabbing, whatever we're doing, we're continuing to do our best to let the public know. We're always willing to hear constructive feedback as well. And we're working on getting that interactive voice response enhancement where we'll have a little bit better targeted reverse 911 calls, that's a generic sense, and be able to text folks. So, also, if you haven't been to our new website that's kind of dedicated to the water coloration issue, arcommunitywater.com, please do so. Love to get some feedback on there, on it. It's got information and timeline and an animated map that shows all the pipes that have been cleaned. So, where are we? We're still not done. We've relieved most of the resins out. We've made tremendous progress, and this is kind of the same couple of bullets as the last council meeting, but the one in blue is that we're continuing with our additional pipe cleaning this month. And we're going to continue until the pipes are clean and the water's clear. And again, love to hear from our customers directly. And we send out surveys, the way we figure out where we're going to target next, or from the surveys, the customer calls, and field testing, or if there's a pipe break and we find that there's some water that, or we find resin in that, in the flushing or anywhere. So, thank you for listening to that update, and I'll just move into the sanitary sewer high flow. So, what are we, what's the goal? We want to find out what changed causing sanitary sewer high flows during intense rains. And what are we doing now? Again, we haven't stopped just because it hasn't been raining very much. City crews are TB'ing our lines when the weather allows, and we're also, you may see Lidl out there, they're going to be lining some of the sewer laterals for pipes that were, for some of the bigger pipes that were lined previously. So, in order to do that, they actually TB' the lines, clean them out, and then go back and line them, and then they have to TB'ing them again because we want to make sure that it was done and done correctly so they can show the integrity of the lining. So, you'll see them out there between October and December. And I've been talking about the inflow abatement services that USSI is going to be doing from October through December, and the kickoff meeting was this week, and they'll be starting next week. And then, after they're done with their evaluation, we'll combine their results along with our own TB'ing, and we'll be prioritizing where we want to line some additional pipes. So, this is where the Lidl is going to be doing some of the lateral lining, and these pipes were already lined in a previous year, and so, we're just coming back and doing the service laterals. So, this is just an example of the notice that will go out to customers before we actually do the lining of the laterals, and they'll be noticed ahead of time. So, this is just the general schedule of the USSI inflow abatement services. We've got the 13 sanitary sewer basins that were identified as high-flow areas during the intense rain. They're the ones that are targeted for this. We can always contract to do additional basins if we find we need to. We estimate that the work will be done within 10 to 12 weeks. The first thing they'll do is they'll go through and they'll pull the manholes, they'll inspect, they'll measure the manholes for the inflow dishes, and then a last to seal the holes. And then, the smoke testing will be done after the sealing. After that, the cleanup caps and those plugs will be installed where needed, and then inflow dishes will be manufactured, installed, and we're really going to be sealing up that system. One of the great things about this particular project is the reports are going to be generated in several formats for us, and one of them we can just transfer right directly into our GIS system. So, to find the really large inflow, we've also asked them to do the overnight flow investigation, and what they do is they use flow monitoring smart lids, and they'll install them on the underside of some target manholes and capture the live flow. And right now, they're estimated about seven will need to be installed in order to, you know, really track down where the inflow might be. So, this is a map of all of the 13 basins. So this is a map of all of the 13 basins that will be done by USSI. And if we need to come back and do more, we will. And this is just a quick outline of what, kind of what I've just talked about probably in a lot better way to look at it, which is a graphic form. So these cleanout smart plugs are called LBL plugs, and they also have, they're geocoded so that we know where those are in our system, which is really important. The elastis seal, this shows where they're sealing the manhole and then the inflow dishes and the nighttime monitoring. And of course, importantly, the inspection reports. This is just a couple of examples of reports that we'll be receiving. So this is a manhole inspection, and it just shows you the map of what manholes were inspected and the manhole numbers, and then a picture, a location, and then what type it is, what condition, does it need repairs, and so forth. And then this is for the smoke testing, so it shows where smoke actually came out of the system. Could be a manhole, could be a cleanout, could be a house, could be anything. So and then it gives you a detail. You see the smoke. You can't see it too well, but it's, there's smoke coming out of that manhole, uh, manhole. It's a really small manhole. That's a cleanout. So that means the cleanout's broken, so they come through and they replace that cleanout. And if needed, they put one of those fancy plugs there. These are the plugs that you've seen me walk around with. I've got a sample in my office. Just a kind of a picture from up top. And with that, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Cameron, who's done a little bit more analysis through the last few weeks since the last council.
Thank you, Marjorie. Yes, this is another graph you've all seen before. We just updated it more recently. We had a pretty large rain event just earlier this week. And we did not see a big uptick. We only had one sewer call associated with that large rain event. So just the takeaway again is, you know, earlier in the, in September, we saw a correlation with large rain events and sewer calls to our customer service center. And since we went out there and did our field recon and made a bunch of infield fixes, we haven't seen that as big upticks in sewer calls associated with rain. And most recently, in October, we've really seen no real big uptick at all. So we were moving in, in the forward direction as far as eliminating stormwater issues with our sewer system. And this is a new graph. We're trying to look at the, the inflow and infiltration issues from all angles. Lift Station 5 is our master regional lift station in the grid area. And this shows the same span of time, starting in early September when we had those two big rain events back to back. And the blue line shows the average flow rate at Lift Station 5. So you can definitely see a correlation between large rain events and the average flow rate on a daily basis for Lift Station 5. But as we go from left to right, from September into October, we can see that we're not seeing the same high levels of peaks. And just in general, the, the kind of baseline average flow rate of Lift Station 5 is, is decreasing as well. So it's just another point in the positive direction where eliminating, you know, inflow issues and infiltration issues. As you can see earlier, I believe it was Tuesday, we had 0.8 inches, and we did not see a very big increase in the average flow rate for Lift Station 5 on that day.
Well, thank you very much for listening. Are there any questions?
Well, first of all, we certainly appreciate all that you're doing to continue to clean out the water lines and to follow up on all the cleaning up the pipes and the water issues here that you're having to deal with. Any questions or comments by council? Councilmember Askew.
Thank you, Mayor. Just appreciate all the hard work. I think our residents around the wrong sort of where I appreciate it. They're seeing a difference. So kudos. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Many thanks to my team.
Councilmember Trace.
Thank you. Marjorie, on the three manholes that you said you guys found, was that 1,000 gallons a minute or 1,000 gallons per hour that was flowing into it?
It'd be 1,000 gallons a minute. Probably breezed past that, that it's not the big, it's not the big inflow because at the wastewater plant, we're also tracking how much is coming in, and we're seeing like an additional million gallons per day coming into the plant too. So we expect to find something. We're, we're going to keep searching.
Okay, and then there was a complaint about a chlorine issue with the drinking water. And I believe Kelvin, one of your, one of your team members jumped on it. Next day, visited the individual's home and did testing and kind of walked him through all that. So I just want to thank you guys for that. And then a question on the lateral lining. What's the, the service impact to those homes? Like when you guys send out that, that little card, is it, you guys kind of cap them off, and it's for a couple hours, they just can't, you know, use any sewer flow? Or how, how long does that last?
Yeah, that's a good question. I might have to get back to you on the, on the final number with that, but it would be, it should be just a few hours because they're just going to put the lining in there, and it's got to set, and then, then they can use it again.
Okay, and that would be from the, the back of sidewalk cleanout to the street? Or that'd be all the way to the home, I guess. How far does that, that lining go?
It goes from our, from the right, typically our side of the lateral, which is from the right-of-way back to our force main or the gravity main.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Marjorie, for your work and your leadership.
Thanks for your support.
At this time, we'll go to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item out of this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each member's requested to complete a sign-in form we provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter, the person addresses the council or can request online. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone to speak during the citizens forum?
Mayor, do you not have anyone in the audience or anyone that has registered online?
Thank you. And that brings us to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now's the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, I'd ask the council, are there any items that you're wanting to pull? Councilmember Matheny?
Yes, I'd like to pull item I for discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Matheny is pulling item I. Are there any other? Councilmember Cooper? F and J? Do we have any items?
Item C, Mayor.
Okay, item C. Are there any other items from this non-controversial list we need to pull? Little joke there. All right. Madam, um... Let's go ahead and go to item C first, Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, sir. Item C is the community agency support grants. And we discussed this during budget hearings and through the budget workshop, but due to an administrative error, we didn't include it in the budget. What we've done, we did a budget transfer, moved some money around, but we'll have to address it in a future budget amendment. The money is in the account to cover it. We'll have to replenish that in a future budget amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Then let's go to item F. Mr. Coop, Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah. Mr. Sturgeon, would you elaborate a little more on that again?
Yes, sir. That's for the inflow services that Marjorie just talked about that we needed due to the emergency condition we have with the water flooding into the wastewater system and causing raw sewage to be flowing under our streets. Made the executive decision to contract with this company to come in and do repair work and analysis to, so we can get the problem fixed once and for all.
We're short one of the engineers. Is that the problem?
That's under RESE Engineering, sir. I don't know the number off of that.
No, my questions are, we one engineer short for the city or?
Yes, sir. We had our engineer resign several months ago, and we need to replenish that. They're really hard to find, utility engineers, and so that's why we want to contract with RESE Engineering, who has continuing services contract to provide those services until we can find somebody.
And two months ago, we, when we found that they were leaving the engineer, we didn't put a RFQ, RFP out for, to get it, somebody to step up to the plate that might want to be able to?
We felt that it was in the best interest of the city to use somebody that was already familiar with our system, such as RESE Engineering, who's been doing a lot of work for us and utilize them. Yes, it's more expensive, but remember, we're not paying them benefits also. We're just paying them a contract fee.
And this $468,000 is just as needed, or is this going to be a?
No, this is act, this, this doesn't have anything to do with hiring the RESE Engineering. This is the USSI for the, the things you just talked about for the sewer and the wastewater. I'm sorry, the sewer and the stormwater issues we're having in the grid. That's what this is for, for repair, analysis of our system and the grid.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
Did I answer your question, sir?
You did.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Matheny, item number I.
So on item number I, and I try, I'm sorry, I tried to like clip it and send it today, but if you go to the property appraiser, you'll see that the parcel that Parton Triangle Park sits on, it's not clear title. You've got some South Florida Water Management District tracks on there. You've got a couple private tracks, and then you've got, I think it's Henry O. Parton, which is made up of about 50 family members. So I had called and talked to Dan Manzares and wanted to put some language into the agreement that we won't accept the park until the county clears up all of the land issues. Just, we don't want to get it and then have this quagmire we have to sort out because if you, if you go to the property appraiser and you look at it, the access road isn't, isn't owned by the county. It crosses over all kinds of other, other properties out there. So just to get that cleared up, Dan said that he didn't see any issue with adding some language to that effect. I'll let him comment on that.
Mr. Manzares?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, Deputy Mayor Matheny and I discussed this. And after we discussed it, we actually received information, and the county has already been working on this issue. So we did get some information back from the county, and they, they understand that they've got to clean up the title to these properties before they give them to the city. So for a little belt and suspenders on this, we would like a lang, we suggest that language be added to section two of the agreement, which would say that the city can, will only accept the property free of any liens or encumbrances. And so we won't have to accept any of these parks without, without a clear understanding that they're free of liens and encumbrances. But they are, the county is working on that. They, I understand that from an email, and I know Stephanie Holcamp has seen it, that the county, I think the county commission authorized some activity on October 12th to move forward with trying to resolve some of these issues and actually acquiring back some of the interests that are showing up on this property. So, but we're not going to take it without the, with the liens or the encumbrances on it.
Does that impact the wording on this resolution?
No, no, sir. It just would be in section two of the agreement. So if the item is approved, we'd ask that you approve it with that additional language, which would, which would state that the, the city will not accept the property unless it's free of any liens or encumbrances.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Manzares? Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Matheny, do you have anything else?
I don't, but I would be happy to make a motion on this independently if that would make it easier.
That'll be fine. Why don't you do that?
Um, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-278R with the language addition to the contract that Mr. Manzares just so eloquently stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item?
Mayor, I do not have anyone in the audience to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Aye, there you go.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Councilmember Cooper, we come to item J.
Um, item J, I'd just like to see if we could pull that and take a vote separate by itself.
That's, are you going to? Mr. Manzares, can you help me with this, please?
Yeah, I believe Mr. Cooper, and he's, we, he, he would, probably wants to vote in opposition to this particular item. So the only way for him to do that without him actually voting against the entire consent agenda to do it separately, so.
You got it.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper, would you like to speak to this item?
Other than I'm going to vote against it, so if we vote for the rest, everything else except for this one and pull it separate and do a separate vote for that.
Okay. Do we have any other comment from council? Could I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve item J of the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion for Councilmember Trace, a second for Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the audience to speak for or to this item?
Mayor, I have no one to speak regarding this item on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll then?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through H.
Second.
And we have a motion from Councilmember Trace for the adoption of the remaining items on the consent agenda, and a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the audience to speak to the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have no one in the audience to speak to the consent agenda.
Then Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Brings us to item number eight, our, under public hearings. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one?
Resolution number 2020-252R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Resolution Number 2019-169R, which adopted the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget for the city of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified their prior year fund balances and or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds not included in the original 2019-2020 budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding in the various funds making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Thank you. Who do we have to speak to this item?
Good evening, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Colazo.
Ms. Colazo.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Sorry about that, Mr. City Manager. I didn't let you speak. I apologize.
Go ahead, Wendy. Have we lost you?
You lose you?
I think we... I think we, I think we're losing you, Wendy. Okay.
Can we come back to that, Mayor?
Yes. Why don't we do that while she tries to maybe reboot? We'll move on to council action, and we'll come back to public hearing item. Madam Clerk, would you please read item number one under council action?
Resolution number 2020-254R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida approving a water and wastewater service agreement from Narcoussi Land Ventures LLC for a residential development named Twin Lakes Phase Eight. An amenity center located in the unincorporated areas of Osceola County on the east side of Hickory Tree Road and the north side of Pine Tree Drive, Pine Tree Road, north side of Nolte Road, east side, east of Old Hickory Tree Road, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Who do we have to speak to this item?
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director.
You have the floor.
Oh, thank you. This particular subdivision is Phase Eight, as she mentioned, and along with an amenity center. And you can see that the yellow, it shows where the city limits are, and so it's outside the city limits. Next slide, please. And it's just a wet water and wastewater agreement. It requires City Council approval because it is outside the city limits. There's another view showing exactly where the development is. Next slide, please. So we recommend approval. There is water and wastewater capacity. And as I mentioned, the project requires City Council approval because it's outside the city limits. Next slide, please. So here are some, just some views of the subdivision, just an aerial shot of the amenity center here. It's a rendering. And next slide. Another view. Next slide. Another view. Next slide. Next slide. Here's a, a rendering of the front of it. Next slide. First house elevation. Next slide. Second house elevation. Next slide. Third one. Next slide. Fourth one. Next. Next. So it just gives you an idea of, of the, what the subdivision will be like.
Okay.
Staff recommends approval of the water and wastewater agreement.
Thank you. Is the applicant here to speak to this?
Mayor, I do have Tom Sullivan registered.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Tom Sullivan with Gray Robinson Law Firm, 301 East Pine Street in Orlando, on behalf of the property owner, just available, available to answer any questions and would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber or online to speak to this item?
Mayor, I have no one in the audience or any others registered for this item.
Thank you. Then we'll have discussion and or motion by council. Councilmember Cooper, you have your, are you wanting to speak to this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Matheny?
Ms. Craig, in your presentation, you kept saying it's outside the city limits. But I guess my question is, is it inside of the 180 service area? And also, like, who provided the water to the other seven phases?
Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. It is outside the city limits. It is within the, as you could see on the location map, it's pretty close to the city limits. And the chapter 180 allows the city to go up to five miles beyond the city limits. And we are serving the, the entire subdivision. So not all the subdivisions served in that area are shown, but there, that whole area I was told was, is served by St. Cloud Utilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any further discussion under motion by council? Councilmember Askew?
I guess some questions. Is this something we're looking to annex in? Or are we building in this area? Are we going to be getting impact fees? Just some questions like that.
Councilmember, Mr. Manzares?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick, obviously with any water and sewer utility agreement, there's a requirement that the developer or the owner of the property encumber the property to be annexed when it is ready to be annexed. So it ultimately would be part of the city limits if the city does extend right up. And as Marjorie pointed out, it's relatively close, so it might ultimately will be annexed. But that would be a legislative decision up to the City Council at that time. But they would have to do it. And with regard to impact fees, they do pay water and sewer impact fees for the project, but those would be, they do not pay mobility fees to the, to the city or police or fire or parks and rail.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Askew?
Yeah, just, I guess another question. I know this is just a small part of it, but I guess, you know, looking out for the citizens of St. Cloud, you're going to develop this area. It's going to impact our roads. And then we're going to be the ones that are going to have to deal with it. I just, you know, I know growth is on the, the main of everybody here, but I, I can't stop it. This is a county project, basically, and we're going to approve the water for it. It just seems like there should be some say in this. Like, we're going to approve this thing, and then it's just going to develop on its own, and, and next thing you know, they're going to come to us, and finally we'll annex in after everything's built. And, and it's just going to put a strain on the city. I would think that you would, you would want to do that before that, and you would have a less of a strain. We can budget for it. So I guess, I know it's a political season right now. It's just, I hate to say, yeah, let's give this water, and the next thing you know, it's all built, and now we have to take care of it, and we get really nothing out of it other than a 25% increase in our water. So, I mean, those are questions that are floating in my mind, but I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels about this. We have no say of what's being built there. We really don't have any say of how wide the roads are, or how far the houses are set back. We really don't have any of that say. And I'm not sure if council wants that say, or we just go ahead and improve it and move forward.
Well, any other council member wants to speak? Mr. Manzares?
And I'll just remind the council, and I believe, and I, I don't know if Ms. Craig has this information or not, but this obviously is the, is a, is a later phase in the project. These other phases have come through with similar water and sewer utility agreements. I don't have the information specifically in front of me, but they've gone through the process the same way that we have in the past with other projects that were in the county, where we've tried to get improvements on the development that the county was not seeking. And they, as I recall, they did apply to this development also, the earlier phases of it.
Councilmember Matheny?
Oh, I think this is like, kind of the crux of our workshop that we just had. But I guess my thought process is there's eventually going to be the interface between the county and the city, eventually. Eventually, the city's going to end, and the county's going to be on the other side. Like, so, you know, that's the thing I'm struggling. Do we keep grabbing land just to say that we have some control over it? But eventually, that line is going to occur, and the county's on the other side of it. But if it makes you feel any better, in the package, it says the setback will be 25 feet for the driveway. They'll have four and a half parking spaces. They'll have two, a minimum of two trees. They should have a minimum of 1,500 air conditioning area, you know, the crosswalks, the air conditioner pads will be staggered. It has the architectural elevations of facade shall vary. You know, if we, if we wanted a model community in St. Cloud, I'd say this is it. I mean, this is a bang-up community, and, and they've got a great, they've got that great buffer along the road frontage. I think if we instituted that for every new development that came in, they had to build a berm with landscaping, I think you'd have less angst from people because you don't drive down the street and just see house, 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 house. You know, you've got some, some buffer. I know I was recently in Turtle Creek on this, like walking on the street, and really it was shocking how well that that berm cut the noise from Narcoussi Road. And then when you got to like the intersection where, you know, there was no berm anymore, like how loud it was, and then you cross the street and you got back into the berm section. I think this is a beautiful community myself. So, and they've, they've done all the things that we've asked for. I guess I just struggle, and that's part of the workshop that we just had. But I just struggle, like, eventually there is a limit to the city. So kind of that financial analysis and scenarios that we asked for coming back.
Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Matheny brought up, the point I was going to bring up, is this is one of those, you know, how far does the city annex discussions? I mean, it's a, it's a part of our utility service area, and, you know, we essentially have to serve it. But we just need to sit down and figure out, do we annex this far? Do we provide fire and police services for this area? One question I have that wasn't, I don't think it was noted in here, is will this section be age-restricted like the other sections of the community?
Mr. Sullivan, can you speak to that?
Yes, Mayor. And thank you, thank you for the question. I, I did want to first say too, we appreciate, I don't know if everyone on the councils had a chance to, to go to this community, but it's something I'm certainly proud to, to represent these folks on. They really try to, try to build a quality product that hopefully is a, is a good example, you know, maybe in comparison with some others. But as councilmember Trace pointed out, this, this is an age-restricted community. I want to be careful to answer your question accurately because I know that they have thought about not age-restricting certain pods of it. And so to be candid with you, I'm not 100% certain that this one would be age-restricted, but it would certainly have the same quality architecture and so forth that the deputy mayor noted. So I, I can circle back to you on that, councilmember Trace, and confirm it. I, I know they were considering not age-restricting that portion, so I don't want to tell you, you know, some information that doesn't turn out to be accurate. But the rest of the community is, is age-restricted, as you noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Askew?
Mr. Sullivan, I think your product is fantastic. That's not the issue. The issue is, we, what we, our problem is that there's a hole in this thing. So we're going to go ahead and approve it. It'll be built, all the impacts, and then a future council will go, well, let's take it in. I, I would love to, to go to the county and say, hey, look, you know what? In 10 years, if we take it in within 10 years, a percentage of the impact fees come back to the city. That's what needs to happen. Because in two years, if we take it in, no impact fees we'll get it. The county's not going to, they'll probably give us our park impact fees, but the rest of it won't. That's what I'm looking at. There needs to be some guidance between the county and the city. Because, to give you an example, they have a rumble road in Narcoussi Road. They built that, and literally, a week later, we annexed it and got nothing. The gas station, the general dollar, that's what, what I'm saying. The project is fantastic. That's probably one of the best projects in the city of St. Cloud right now. The hole is, we don't really understand what the consequences are to the city, and I understand where everybody wants the line, but future council might take that line, future council might block that line. They can change the JPA. There's a lot of things that can happen. I'm concerned that the growth is happening around our city. I can't stop it. No, you guys can't stop it. But we can prepare the city and protect our citizens, so we're not putting a burden on their budget and a burden on the budget of the city. That needs, that hole needs to be fixed. And it's, it's a hole that keeps going around in a circle. But again, Mr. Sullivan, I love your project. That's not the issue. The issue is that there's a, there's a relationship problem between the county and the city, and I wish that hole would be fixed, or percentage, something. It's a simple, it almost seems like two sentences could fix it. So, other than that, I, I appreciate your, your candor and everything, the, the project. I, I like the project. That's not the issue.
And, Mayor, if I, if I'm-
Go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
I, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, you know, I appreciate the, the dialogue and the conversation. I think just to, just to mention, you know, a couple points I already made. I, I understand where, where the, some of the questions and comments are coming from. I guess just i-if you, you know, with regard to this bigger dynamic between the county and the city and the annexations, I mean, as, as Dan mentioned, I mean, we've really tried to do everything the right way here, aside from the, the quality of the product, and, and I appreciate the recognition of that. But what, what I'm getting at is, I mean, we, the property is, as councilmember Trace mentioned, in the, in the city's utility service area, we've, we've done our, our other phases. We've done these, you know, same agreements with the city. We've, we've got that, the annexation petitions that are attached, you know, when it, when it does become contiguous and y'all want it to come in, that's, that's what that annexation petition provides for. So, you know, in the meantime, we, we are paying, you know, the, the water and sewer impact fees. We, we are paying impact fees. We're, we're just paying them to the county, which, which, you know, I understand there's a difference there. But I think going forward, you know, you will have, you know, if and when the, the project does come into the city, y'all will have an increase in, in tax base through property tax revenue and things like that. So I think, I guess my main point is, we're, we're really appreciate your support to, on continuing to, to, to do a quality project out there. We're, we're planned by all the rules. And if, you know, the rules change in the future, you know, we're happy to be part of that, part of that dialogue, but would certainly appreciate y'all's support on this next phase of, of, of an agreement for the water and wastewater.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the council like to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, how many total homes are going to be there? I'm sorry.
Well, for, yeah, for, for this, for this, this phase, this phase eight is 324 single-family homes. And I'd, I'd have to look at the whole build-out for the entire project. The, the phasing, by the way, it's a little bit out of sequence. I think this is phase eight, and we had some phase numbering. I, I don't believe we're already up till fa, phase eight. It skipped around a little bit, but, but ultimately, it's a lar, it's a large project. It's a couple, couple thousand units, you know, ultimately at, at full build-out.
Got you. And I, I do agree with Mr. Askew. I think that five, 10 years down the road, we're going to be in a pickle as far as police, fire, and EMS, and are either put another fire station closer down that, that area. We're not going to have the money, and the citizens are going to have to pay for it. And the county is going to get all this money, impact fee money, and it's gone. We can't pick it up. We can't go back five, 10 years from now and say, we need some more money from the county to give it back to us. And I agree with you, Mr. Askew. You're right. And it's just, it's tough right now to, to say let you do this. And it's just, it's not real smart for us to do it right now and jump ahead for no more than 25% more for water and sewer. That's my, a point where I'm, where I'm at. Thank you.
My frustration is, you know, we're not being asked to annex, but our whole arguments revolve around annexation, and we're not being asked to do that. That'll be a decision for a future council meeting to make. We're being asked to supply water that has already been supplied to the rest of the, of the area. Whether or not we annex is going to be an issue down the road.
I understand where you're, I understand where you're coming from. Yes, sir.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with the discussion the councils have, having right now. I think it's important that we look at this holistically. And I'd like to suggest we'll have staff and look forward, looking at annexing encumbrances and enclaves. We had done that several years ago. We had a lot of public outcry, and we stopped that process. We have a whole presentation that we put together in, in annexing in phases. But this one seems logical to me to just go ahead and move forward with the annexation process and not lose those impact fee revenues. And I agree. And I don't want to have to come back to you guys in three or four years and say, okay, now we need to borrow more money to build a fire station that we can pay for with impact fees. So my suggestion is, if you give me direction, have staff move forward and look at the feasibility of annexing encumbrances and also enclaves. Thank you.
Mr. Manzares?
Just to remind you, so currently, we can only annex under, the city can only annex under encumbrance if it meets the requirements of chapter 171. And so we just want to be careful about that. We can certainly look into that, and I haven't looked into the annexation. We can certainly look into that and I haven't looked into the annexation, uh, compliance issues through the statute with regard to this particular project. Certainly can. Uh, but again, I just wanted to point out what the mayor had suggested earlier. Annexation is a legislative decision that has to be made by the council. Because there's a notice of encumbrance out there, it doesn't mean the county, the city at any time has to annex the property. Uh, so it doesn't mean that the city has to accept providing police or fire protection or any of that at any time in the future. Um, so just want to make sure everybody remembers that.
Thank you. Councilmember Trace.
Uh, thank you. Um, I also wanted, uh, if, uh, Bill, if you guys can, uh, look into what, uh, council member Askew brought up of a, a discussion with the county of if something gets annexed within a certain time period, what percentage of impact fees, um, go, you know, get, get remitted back to the city? For, you know, just any of the impact fees that are generated, whether it be parks or transportation.
I wrote that down without objection. I don't think any councilman would object to us moving forward. I did write that down as a note to work with them, see if we could come up with an agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any objections to him moving forward with that? I don't think so. Councilmember Matheny.
Uh, I heard what the city manager said about moving forward with annexations with staff. I don't support that. I think we have to like figure out where the heck the city limits are and all the stuff that we're just talking about in the workshop before we go and, and say we're annexing, you know, this kind of cart before the horse. Like we, we need to get this base work done before we figure out we're going to go annex things. Um, so I just one, one vote for, I don't think it's time to do that. Um, I would like to postpone this vote and I don't know if, um, I guess I'll make a motion to postpone this vote until a, a future council meeting that they come back to let us know if it's an age restricted community.
I'll second it.
Okay, do we have any other discussion to postpone this vote?
Uh.
Count, Mr. Str- Sullivan.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I, I, um, uh, you know, to, to be candid, I wasn't, wasn't expecting that tonight. But if, if, um, if you would, um, eh, consider just continuing what possibly to your next meeting, I can definitely get a quick answer on that, that one question. Or, or if you, if you don't mind, I could certainly get an answer and, and, and have it taken up later on today's agenda, if possible, I just have to, um, just make a quick call to our client on that.
My motion is to postpone it and I can do it to the next meeting. That's fine.
Mr. Mazzaros.
I was just going to clarify the motion that, that would be to the next meeting, I think. That's all it was, and that's the, and that's the motion, right? So.
Yes. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber or online to speak?
Mayor, I have no one in the chamber or online to speak on this item.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the item of postponing this to the next council meeting?
Mayor, if it's possible.
Councilmember Askew.
Um, so a mobility fee. I'm getting, you know, just being up here for a while, it seems like a road lasts for 20 years. So wouldn't, couldn't you make it a mobility fee coming from the, cause I were, I don't, I guess I don't really want to stop the project in a way, and I agree with, um, Deputy Mayor Matheny and I agree with Mr. Trace. If there is some kind of, uh, protection in there for the city, so let's say in 10 years it comes into the city. So half the mobility fees come into the city as well. Or five years, or one year, or 20, after 20 years, it just goes away. It just seems to make more sense that there's a clear definition of the city takes in something or doesn't take in something that there's, oh, you know what's going to happen in X amount of years. It could be for all of them, police, fire, uh, parks, rec, whatever. If we can get some kind of agreement with the, the county, and I don't think it'll happen in a month or so, but, it just seems like that could be the, the clear, um, you know, we're going to annex it or we're not going to annex it. I mean, that seems to be the question tonight or actually our workshop. Can we make clear, and then, okay, let's continue with the project. In five years, we annex it and 15, you know, a per- portion of the impact fees or mobilities. But if the county group goes ahead and does that road and, and justifies it, fantastic. It's great for our citizens and Osceola County and the whole.
Mr. Mazzaros.
And, and I just, and Mr. Askew, I, I understand and obviously respected position you have. But just to clarify, the issue before you tonight is whether you provide water and sewer to a development that's in your service area. That's the issue that's before you tonight. Uh, and in, in the annexation issue, obviously is a bigger umbrella issue. But as we, consistent to what we've advised the council before, you as a water and sewer utility provider ha- have somewhat of an obligation to provide water and sewer to those projects that are within your service area. And this one is within your service area. So I understand Councilwoman Matheny's question and the, uh, the answer with regard to the age restriction. And that's something that can be dealt with, uh, would cost you about ha- having this project and the, the determination of this water and sewer agreement wait until some potential agreement could be negotiated with the county? Cause I don't see that happening anytime in the immediate future.
Councilmember Trace.
I was actually going to bring up the same thing that Dan, um, just brought up. I don't, the, to me, there isn't a nexus between it being a age restricted community and us providing water. It's in our service boundary. You know, we're required to provide water and sewer services to it. Um, so I, I, I think it's, uh, I'm, I'm fine with this postponement because the, um, applicant says that they're fine with it. But I don't, I don't think this is something we should, um, get it, uh, hung up on based on an agreement with the county.
All right. Are we done? Madam Clerk, will you call the role on the issue of postponement to the next council meeting?
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Nay.
Mayor Blackwell.
Nay.
Motion carries three to two.
Item is postponed.
Mayor.
Yes.
I believe Mrs. Colazo is back on for a public hearing, item number one, if you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Colazo, would you like to speak to resolution number 2020-252R?
I would, thank you so much, uh, uh, Mayor and Council. Sorry about that. It was just a, a preview of it, getting you guys warmed up. Let me just wait for the slide to come on and then we will proceed. And thankfully this wasn't the 23-page BA, so we're going to get through it just fine. Thank you so much. Um, again, uh, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director, uh, this is the presentation of Budget Amendment Number Six for Fiscal Year 1920. Uh, Resolution 2020 dash 252R is of course, as per the city code, as mentioned before, under two dash two 12. And this is the city manager's certification that funds are available to appropriate, uh, those funds. And then this budget amendment obviously meets the strategic goals of the city and of course, a financial sustainability. Next slide, please. We have one item on the BA number six, which is a increase into, uh, for the self-insured trust fund for medical, um, costs. A total of $627,650 is the net increase for the fund coming in from revenue from prior year fund balance, uh, a total of 627,2627,750. We're going to be increasing, um, excuse me, decreasing, uh, contingency for 142,146. And this is to move those professional services costs to the medical he, uh, care, uh, as the anticipated costs were way above what we anticipated due partially, well, the majority of it to the COVID-19 effects. Um, as you can see in the examples, uh, most of the medical claims year, a month over a month for the year have averaged in the last nine months about, um, $331,000 within the last two months. And with the influx from COVID-19, we went from, from 436 to a range of 489,000 with still one more month remaining. Next slide, please. Finally, the staff recommends approval of this resolution and requests the action from City Council to approve Resolution 2020-252R. I'm available for any questions that I may answer in the, in reference to this topic.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone in the chamber or online to speak to this item?
Mayor, we have no one in the chamber or online to speak on this item.
Thank you. Then we'll have discussion under a motion by council. Councilman Askew.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for council member Askew to approve. We can go, I'll have discussion. Mr. Trace. Do I have a second? I'll make a second. Mr. Trace, would you like to speak to this item?
Ms. Colazo, that you, you threw out a new fact that wasn't a part of, um, my briefing, the extra costs due to COVID-19. Um, it looks like based on the numbers you just showed, $100,000 in one month and $150,000 in another month. Uh, I thought the federal government was covering any COVID-related, um, i- issues or medical costs or all that. Is that, is that the case or is it not because we're self-insured?
Um, in the reference to because we're not self-insured, no, they do not. And you still would have to, even though they would and have programs out there, we have to do it on a reimbursement basis, which in this case, uh, the reason I say it's primarily because of COVID-related items was because, uh, the claims, we don't get to see everything. Um, our demographic also increased in the type of diseases that they gain. So this is partially that, it's not all COVID. Uh, we had a lot of cancer and high tacking diseases, um, throughout these months. So if there is an opportunity, we will grab it, but it's on a reimbursement basis. And currently, to answer your question, the short version, self-funded is not grabbing some of that federal assistance at this time, so we have to cover the cost.
Okay, thank you. And, um, one other question, you know, I, I, I see everywhere insurance costs going up, especially if you're self-insured. Um, you know, I just want to make sure, or to ask the question, are we budgeting for next year based on these increased numbers?
Um, as I answered your question before through briefing and to be transparent, sir, you know, um, uh, we've taken in consideration this wing right here. It is unrealistic that I would be that fantastic and good to know that this was going to come this high. But I have, um, a budgeted for this item and we continue to, we have some surplus in there that we're monitoring now with monthly monitoring. So we are, we've adjusted the budget as best as I could without a magic ball, you know, to tell us the future. And we continue to monitor this. So I feel, uh, very, very certain that we'll hit the number, uh, right on it. Uh, just to set the pace with self-funded, um, right now, our average increase should be by industry standard about 11 to 13% year over year. And we got 7% increase. So we're okay on that. You know, they didn't give us the full branch of the industry increase. Um, if we were to look at any other option, initial, uh, reviews of that have been that it would cost us over another million and a half to go fully funded. So self-funded is the best route to go for us at this time.
Okay, thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yes, Council. I'd like to back on that a little bit, Mr. Trace. We are, and council, we are pursuing, uh, CARES Act funding to the county. I'm still working with the county manager, uh, coming up with how we're going to transfer those funds, uh, that they haven't expended. So we're, us and the city, Kissimmee are working with the county. Do you know, I don't know if it's going to come to fruition, but, uh, Mr. Steigerwald and Mr., um, Fisher and I are talking about through, and staff is working up those numbers. So if it is COVID-related, uh, we should be able to retrieve some of that money back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion? We have a motion from council member Askew, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role?
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to item number two under Council Action, I believe. Deputy Clerk, will you please, uh, read?
Resolution number 2020-dash-268R, a resolution of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the City Manager to approve and execute the memorandum of understanding between the City of St. Cloud and University of Central Florida Research Foundation, UCF, making certain findings, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, this is Andre Anderson. May I be recognized, please?
If you may, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is an item related to a agreement between the City of St. Cloud, uh, City Kissimmee, Osceola County and UCF, um, Business Incubator for the purpose of establishing a pilot program referred to as the Growth Wheel 360 Program. This program is essentially designed to promote the continuation of sales and services during this pandemic period that we are all experiencing and the hardships that a lot of businesses are facing. And so, um, the buzzword la- of late is pivoting. And that essentially relates to businesses that are now remarketing their efforts and realigning their business plans in a way that provides continu- con- continuity of their business and allows them to be sustainable into the future. So this essentially would be a business-to-business development, um, activity and also to allow for, um, them to develop different customer segmentation. Uh, some of the expected outcomes, of course, would include new jobs, sales and of course, um, company expansion. Next slide, please. Um, this pilot program is designed to be for six months and it would provide technical assistance from UCF to these local businesses. The cost right now that we, we anticipate is about $1,650. And this is slated for 10 businesses within the city limits of St. Cloud. It's approximately $1,500 per business. And there is a 10% administration fee that will go to UCF. And, uh, some of the, um, program results, of course, will be reported to the, to the US Economic Development Administration in order to be able to expand the capacity of this program. Next slide, please. Um, this program is of course, consistent with our economic development strategic plan goal as well as growth management. And staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2020-dash-268R to enter into this agreement with UCF for this Growth Wheel 360 Program. And asks that the City Council approve Resolution 2020-dash-268R. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online in the chamber to speak to this item?
Mayor, I do not have anyone online or in person for this item.
Thank you. We'll have discussion under a motion by council at this time. Councilmember Matheny.
Um, I have two questions. One is who's going to pick the 10 businesses? And the second question is, is there some kind of language that we put in here to make sure that we get, um, people who are truly serious about availing themselves of the service? You know, like that you, I, I mean, and I don't know what the language, how strong it needs to be, but is it like that you potentially will have to repay us if you drop out? Um, or, you know, something along those lines? Cause I just hate for someone to like sign up for it and then, you know, not really be serious and take a spot away from somebody who is really serious about doing it. And then I know it says in here that you had to, I'm trying to find the language here. It said that you had to commit X number of hours per week and X number, I don't, I don't see the language. I'm sorry.
It's four to six hours per month, yes.
Yeah, so I just, I'm just wondering if we need to put, you know, I guess I'm curious how we're going to pick the 10 businesses. And then my second part is to have some kind of repercussion if they drop out of the program or, you know, whatever, they might have to repay the, the costs.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, um, can I be recognized?
If you may.
Uh, thank you. So, um, Deputy Mayor, yes, um, that was considered. Um, how the 10 individual businesses will be selected would be through an application process that would, that would submit and they will be reviewed and interviewed by a panel. And the panel that we are anticipating using will be the same panel that we currently use right now for the Economic, um, Stimulus Recovery, a panel right now. So that with the group that will make the determination that these businesses are eligible based on their responses to the application. Um, to your second question regarding whether or not they're serious and if they didn't, if they fell out, what would happen, would they repay us? As part of the application right now for the grants, we would also emulate the same criteria, which is that there, they have to sign an attestation that indicates that, that acknowledges that if they fall out of the program, that they are obligated to repay that fund.
Okay, great. That sounds like you got it covered.
Yes, thank you.
Do we have any other discussion or question by council? Councilmember Trace.
I think this is a great program and I'd make a motion for approval.
We have a motion for approval on Councilmember Trace. I'll second it.
Go ahead, Mayor.
All right, I'll second it. I think it's a great program. Also, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role?
Councilmember Askew.
Aye.
Councilmember Trace.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell. Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask our deputy clerk, shall we read item number three?
Resolution number 2020-279R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a mobility fee agreement with AVEX Homes LLC relating to the roadway extension improvements through Stevens Plantation North, connecting Budinger Avenue to Canoe Creek Road, authorizing the mayor to execute the mobility fee agreement and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, this Andre again, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is a Resolution 2020-270R for a mobility fee agreement with AVEX Homes LLC related to mobility fees for a roadway within Stevens Plantation North, a proposed roadway. So a few years ago, the city identified a need for a four-lane road, divided roadway that would connect Canoe Creek Road and Budinger Avenue as part of our transportation mobility master plan that the city adopted in 2019. We had entered into an agreement with Osceola Engineering, and they provided a design for that four-lane divided roadway, which the city was in the process of constructing. And part of that design also incorporated some requirements of the Osceola County School Board Agreement that we had entered into back in 2017 related to land that the school district dedicated to the city in exchange for us constructing a turn lane that would go into St. Cloud Elementary School. And there was also a lease agreement related to property on 17th Street. So this roadway would satisfy part of that requirement for this turn lane for the school district as well as address the mobility master plan requirement for the city's overall connectivity of roadways throughout our city. As you are probably well aware, there's a need for several north, south, and east-west corridors to connect the city from end to end. So AVEX Homes LLC has in fact agreed to dedicate a right-of-way and to construct this roadway as part of their development for the mobility fee credits. And as I said, it would also include a school board elements to be constructed in the first phase. And the estimated cost of this road construction will be approximately $2.2 million that will be paid in mobility fees. Just by way of a little bit of history, just to understand, the reason why the city did not proceed with the road construction herself initially was that we did not want to limit any future developer that would come in from designing their project in a way that met their needs and that was also consistent with our plan. And so as a result, when Galleria first came forward, they offered to build the road and the council, the DSD, the City Council, approved an agreement that indicated that they would provide reimbursement to Galleria in an amount of approximately $1.5 million at that time. That was a couple of years ago. Since that time, the cost of development has obviously increased. And so this cost is the same provisions as was offered in Galleria. So there's no change. It's simply that AVEX is being offered the same agreement that was offered to Galleria. Next slide, please. So this is a map that shows the segment of roadway between Canoe Creek Road and Budinger Avenue. And you will see that it is a proposed four-lane road. The plan that AVEX Homes is proposing essentially leaves that alignment intact. And they would, of course, construct this roadway in phases to first address at least the portion that's related to the St. Cloud Elementary School for the left-turn lane into the school. Next slide, please. So of course, this mobility fee agreement is consistent with our infrastructure strategic plan goal. And the city staff recommends approval of Resolution 2020-270R for the mobility fee agreement with AVEX Homes. I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have online with me Missim Gendor, the Public Works Director, also available to answer questions if there is any.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item? Madam Clerk, is he, go ahead.
Mayor, I do have one member in the audience that would like to speak on this item.
Okay, please have them do so at this time.
Hello, Mayor, council. Thank you for your time. Dwayne Norman, 3551 Buckingham Court. I would just like to say I strongly object to any mobility fee agreement between the city and AVEX Homes. Mobility fees should be used to limit the impact to the city and the county roads by the development of these new homes. Not given back to the developer to help offset costs of internal road systems and the new development. They will build the development without this agreement. The city will also have final approval of the master plan, therefore being able to dictate the route of roads in and out of the neighborhood. The developer would definitely want, the developer would definitely want to connect to Budinger as well as Canoe Creek Road. They will pay for this connector. These mobility gifts to developers are somewhat new in the last few years in Osceola County. Let's say five, 10 years. And a bad deal for our citizens. Road problems in this city and county are partially because of just such agreements. This money would be better spent moving up the four-laning improvements for Canoe Creek Road, partnering with the county to do this four-laning of Canoe Creek Road. These mobility fees were and are to try and make growth pay for its impact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone else?
I do have Eric Marks with his hand raised on the attendees and Kristi Barrero.
Mr. Mayor, Eric Marks is the representative from AVEX Homes. And Kristi Barrero is the consultant with Hite Design that did the concept plan design.
Okay, well, they're welcome to speak at this time, if they're.
We're trying.
Can you hear, I can hear.
Okay, can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Eric.
Okay, give me just one moment. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm Eric Marks with AVEX Homes. Address is 28 East Washington Street in Orlando. And this issue, this matter is closely tied to the next matter that's on your agenda, which is the conceptual plan for the Stevens Plantation North project. We've been working closely with the city staff on this at a really record pace. And I want to take a moment and just thank them for being so responsive to us. And we really have done more. And also frankly, to the Hite team, we've accomplished more in the last 30 days than I've probably ever seen on a project. So we appreciate that. I understand the concerns about the impact fee reimbursement coming from this development agreement. And the reality is this road was something that we believe was part of the original deal, was a commitment by us to build the road in return for impact fee credits. Had that commitment not been there and had the city not already engineered and had the road in their long-range plans, we really could have designed this project in a way that avoided it. What's happened now is we essentially have two connector roads, one at Fertig and one at what we're calling the Stevens Plantation Connector. So the impact fees are really there because this is a road that the city was going to build on their own. It was a road that if the plan had been executed, it would be complete by now. And we're just coming in and frankly, carrying the cost of building it and waiting for impact fee reimbursement. Another key point on this is that we haven't asked for any discount in the price for the right-of-way that's being allocated for this road. And that's essentially a double impact here. Because if you see the way that the road aligns next to the gas easement, we end up with about 13 acres plus or minus of developable property that's being allocated to this road. So it has a really significant impact on the density of the project and the viability of the overall project. I don't know if there's a way we could share a screen so that you could see Kristi's screen, but we could, we could show you a few images that might help understand that. Yeah, sir.
I would like to add that if Kathy could make her a panelist, I think she can share her screen.
All right.
Good evening, this is Kathy. I've promoted her to panelist. Her Zoom connection will reconnect and she should be able to share her screen.
Okay.
Okay. So. Can everybody see her screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, first, thanks for your patience. We would really love to be standing in front of you guys to do this. It would certainly make life easier. But this is the typical section for the road. It is, the total width is 100 feet, I believe. It is two, it is a divided highway essentially with a wide median. It also has a 10-foot multipurpose path on one side and a, excuse me, a sidewalk on the other side. So it is a big, wide, you know, road intended to provide connectivity between Budinger and Canoe Creek. And it's not a road we would have designed, obviously internally in our project. If you'll switch now back to the overall plan for the project. So as you can see, you'll have Fertig Drive, which actually lines up well with the existing Fertig Drive to the east. And that road could ultimately, if we had designed this without the Stevens Plantation Connector being what we felt like was a requirement of the deal, we would have made Fertig Road that connectivity all the way back through to Budinger and into the school. The, we believed that the city really wanted the road as it was currently designed, that the design was complete and ready to go and that that would be the quickest way to get it built. Since all these discussions have started, I think that's become a little bit more fluid. And we, you know, welcome the opportunity to talk about other alignments. But for today's purpose, to move forward so that we can get this project closed in time, what we'd ask for is that we stick with the commitment that was made in the contract and provide for full reimbursement for Stevens Plantation Road. One other thing I wanted to show, can you show that image that? So the impact of the road, if you see the highlighted blue area there, the impact of the road's alignment and the gas pipe easement makes all of that section essentially undevelopable. And that's good upland property. So the road, if I remember correctly, is plus or minus seven acres. And the reality is that it eats 12.7 acres. At the rate we're paying for property here, that has a value of, is that the number? $590,000. And that's essentially a contribution being made by us to the city. Because we're paying for that right-of-way in the first instance. So I'll turn it over to Kristi quickly if she's got more to add. I think we may have covered it, but Kristi's with Hite. She has done a fantastic job working hard on this and so I'll let her jump in.
Good evening, Kristi Barrero with Hite Design. I believe that Eric has done a good summary of this item that's on the agenda for the evening. When we get to the next item, the conceptual plan, I'll go into a little bit more detail. But we're here to answer any questions that you have about these mobility fees.
Do we have any discussion in our comment by council at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Cooper, please.
Thank you. Looking at this road, it gives to AVEX ingress and egress, two different more ways to get out. But at the same time, it looks like to me the impact credits we're going to give is going to be probably, I don't know the percentage, but it's going to be probably 75, 80% homes that are going to be paid for by, through the citizens of St. Cloud that are going to pay for this. And AVEX is going to have two ingress and egresses. And most subdivisions pay for their own ingress and egress. You know, until you get out to that Canoe Creek Road or you get to Budinger, it's normally the subdivision pays for all that stuff. And I just absolutely cannot see that we should have to pay for that from the taxpayers' money to be able to do that or give credit, impact fee credits back to AVEX. I'd almost just say, let that road go and let's see what AVEX is going to put another road in there themselves. Thank you.
Do we have any other council members? Question to speak to this or ask a question?
Please.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I feel like we can't really talk about the mobility fee agreement without talking about the next agenda item. Is it possible to read it in and have like a kind of a global conversation?
If that's, yeah, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. If that's, if the rest of the council's okay with that, I think that would be appropriate.
All right, there are no objections?
No, I don't have a problem.
And staff can do its presentation and then you can have a global discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, because I got a lot of comments, but I think it's better to kind of talk about it as a whole.
Madam Clerk, will you please read item number four?
Discussion and possible action regarding the approval for conceptual master plan, concept plan amendment for mixed-use property containing approximately 141.4 acres of vacant land known as Stevens Plantation North.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Andre, may I be recognized, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This item is for council's consideration of a mixed-use conceptual master plan and concept plan for property known as Stevens Plantation North. It is an amendment to the previously approved Galleria at Canoe Creek. As you may recall, this project was approved back in January of 2018. And it included a future land use amendment, a zoning map amendment, and also a conceptual master plan and concept plan. Since that time, that project did not move forward and the property was put back for sale. And now we have AVEX Homes, which has contracted to purchase this property. And part of that purchase and sale agreement is to seek entitlement on this property for an amendment to the Galleria at Canoe Creek Concept Plan. The applicant submitted their application to amend the concept plan in September of 2020. And we held our DRC meeting on October 8. We provided a series of comments to the applicant to which they responded. We had a post-DRC meeting on October 21. And on 10/22 today, we received all their responses to the comments that were presented at the DRC meeting. Next slide, please. This right here is a summary table of the proposed development and build-out. They identified the project into several parcels, A through G. And it's broken up into different neighborhoods per the requirements of mixed use. So you have neighborhood NH1, which is typically single-family detached, and neighborhood type two, which is typically. and neighborhood type two, which is typically attached units and townhomes. They also have a neighborhood center, which is approximately five acres. And the reason it's five point seven because it also includes the gas line easement. They also include open space and some civic uses and, of course, infrastructure and right-of-way, totaling one hundred and forty-one acres. Next slide, please. This slide is a new slide. It's essentially the same as before, but they've refined it a little bit. And it shows the various conceptual master plan, the parcels that are, that straddle both. Fertig Drive, which is that yellow portion, is the neighborhood type one. And then the parcels that are sort of a tan color, I guess, if that's what's calling your screen, is the neighborhood type two. And then that sort of red, maroon color is the neighborhood commercial, neighborhood center land use. Next slide, please. This map right here shows the hierarchy of roadways that are in this plan. The bright blue is the Stevens Plantation Connector Road with a hundred-foot right-of-way. And then the orange-colored roadways are, is the next tier down at seventy-two foot Y, which is basically the Fertig Drive that connects to Fertig across Canoe Creek. And then the yellow roadways is the next tier down, which is considered local roads within this project. It is set up in a great pattern that allows for blocks of uses. Next slide, please. This graphic shows the multi-use trail and their connectivity network. And it shows that all the roadways will include trails and pedestrian sidewalks and connection internal and external to this project. Next slide. This is their phasing plan and there are approximately seven phases to this plan. The area in blue on the south end of this project is Phase One, which also includes a portion of the Stevens Plantation Connector Road, which would satisfy the requirement from the school district that I mentioned earlier as far as providing a turn lane into Saint Cloud Elementary School. And then the purple area, of course, is Phase Two of their project, which also aligns with Fertig Drive that goes north, south, and east-west from Canoe Creek and intersects with the Stevens Plantation Connector Road. Then Phase Three, which is also a neighborhood two, type two community, is the portion that's on the east side of Fertig Drive. And then Phase Five would be on the north side of Stevens Plantation Connector Road, which also is a neighborhood type two community. Phase Six is the neighborhood center portion that fronts onto Canoe Creek Road. And Phase Seven is the remaining neighborhood center portion that fronts on Budinger Avenue. Next slide, please. So of course, this project is consistent with economic development strategic plan goal as well as the growth management strategic plan goal. DRC and staff recommends approval of the Stevens Plantation North conceptual master plan and also asks that the city council recommend approval of this plan. I think the applicant has a presentation that they would also like to make this time.
Recognize the applicant at this time? Mr. Marx?
Yes, thank you again. And we agreed, I think it's helpful to talk about both of these together. I'm going to turn it over to Christie Barrero from Height to give an overview of the plan. And then we're here to answer questions and I'm sure engage in discussion about the project.
So Christie Barrero, again, from Height Design. Thank you all for hearing this item tonight. And if you don't mind, if I could share my screen again. Andre did a wonderful job of sharing our graphics that we sent him today. So I do appreciate those updates to your description, Andre. I did just want to go over briefly that our original application included two different master, or two different conceptual plans. We had one plan and an alternative plan. We weren't sure which direction we were going. After having our DRC meeting, they requested that we choose one plan. So we have gone ahead and done that. And not sure what was in your original packets, but what Andre was showing previously is the planner moving forward with. The main difference was the central parcel. Previously, we were showing it as multifamily. Now we have changed it to single-family detached. We do still have three different product types. Single-family detached, front-loaded townhomes, and rear-loaded townhomes. So we will have a good mix of product in the area. Also, we are showing, again, two neighborhood centers. We did have discussion with DRC regarding the size and the intensity of the neighborhood centers. So those do correspond with your city codes. We also had a lot of discussion regarding the roads and realized that multimodal transportation is very important to your city. So like Andre showed on the trails and network plan, we do have quite a few connector roads. We are connecting to Canoe Creek with Fertig Drive, as well as, we're calling this road East-West Road A and Stevens Plantation. So we have three connections proposed on Canoe Creek. And then, of course, Stevens Plantation will go all the way to Budinger. These roads are not just for vehicles. We also have sidewalks, bike lanes. We have parallel parking. There will be trails as well. So definitely going to be a multimodal community. Thank you for pulling that up. So, yeah, different road widths for different uses. The yellow roads that you're seeing are more internal neighborhood roads. The red are alleys for the rear-loaded townhome products that we're proposing. The orange road is a little bit wider neighborhood road that will have parallel parking and bike lanes in it. And then this main entrance at Fertig is just a little bit wider to kind of have a grander entrance to the community. So again, we worked with DRC quite extensively on these road sections. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, we would enjoy having dialogue with you this evening and happy to answer any of them.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online or in the chamber to speak to this?
Mayor, I do have one person in the audience that would like to speak on this item.
All right. Would you please step up and share your name and address again for the record?
Thirty-five fifty-one Buckingham Court. As far as the master plan, I just wanted to point out for you to take into consideration with the densities of whatnot townhomes and single-family homes, to remember, they do have different impact fees. It's not just all the same as a single-family home. So think of that when you're thinking of the road impact, the school impact, everything that's going to come. Because when you do those townhomes or more multifamily homes, you're not getting the same amount of money you do from the single-family homes. Okay? The other thing is, I like, like the gentleman said, if we didn't do that straight road, which I think is just a drag strip, I think that money is much better used on Canoe Creek Road and just use Fertig Road. If the city, the city wanted an east-west road, that's perfect. What's wrong with Fertig Road? And I think, I'm not an engineer, I'm not law enforcement, but I think that Fertig Road that takes more of an S is probably a safer road than just a short little drag strip going across the top. Excuse me, it's massive. And then with that, AVEX will not feel the burden of donating those acres that they're talking about. They would have to donate for that east-west road. So I think the Fertig Road would be playing plenty of east-west road for us. But don't forget the impact fees with the density when you look at that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone else?
Mayor, I do not have anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny.
I want to thank Mr. Norman for his comments. And I did bring that up to our consultant about the impact fees varying between the different product types. And they are analyzing that when they come back to us with the new impact fees structure. I wanted to, I wanted to bring in the master plan at the same time we're having this mobility fee because I'll just be honest with you, I'm underwhelmed with the whole, the whole plan. You know, we go along these paths and we see bubble plans and we're always kind of promised more detail later, right? Like, there's going to be more detail. Like, right now, you're not going to have much detail. And then, you know, so here we get this master plan and I'm like, it's all houses. Like, how is this a mixed-use development, you know? There's a little bit of commercial, but it's, one of them is like in Phase Seven. And the other one is in like Phase Three. I don't get it. I don't like it. You know, I asked about the single-family homes, what the lot width is. And I'm sure Mr. Cooper, you're going to, well, faint when he hears it's thirty-two feet for a single-family home. I said, how the heck are you going to have a garage? Like, the whole front of the home will be a garage? So then I was told that they would have one-car garages? And I'm like, that, that doesn't work. That's just going to have cars all out on the street. We all know, I mean, I've had friends who've lived in places with one-car garage. That's fine if you're one person living there. But other than that, you're, you know, the first guy home is like the first guy to leave. So you're not, you're like constantly jockeying cars. And I'm just, I'm underwhelmed. I'm disappointed in the master plan. You know, I understand that the city designed this road in 2017. Lots of things have happened since 2017. And, you know, I kind of, I, I talked to the deputy city manager about this. You know, I was like, I would want to see, and I, and I know we are where we are, but we're hitting more details so we can make more comments. But I know that, you know, I'm like, I want to see some justification that all four lanes should be the city's responsibility if we go with this east-west road. Frankly, I'm fine if they go re-envision how the connections go. I asked if they had looked at traffic signals. They haven't looked at that yet. So how the heck are we doing a mobility fee agreement when we don't even know if traffic signals are warranted? You know, Budinger and Canoe Creek are two-lane roads. So I, like, it doesn't make sense to me that the city needs a four-lane road to connect two-lane roads. You know, I just, I just don't think we're ready for this conversation at all. Like, mobility fees or the site plan, I'm, I'm not loving it. Let me see here, I got some notes. You know, the trails are nice. It'd be nice to see how they connect outside of the development. So what are you connecting to? Is there a trail network that, you know, is going to feed into this? Or is this really just going to be sidewalks and trails for just the people who live there? You know, if you Google mixed use, you know, I'm not a planner. I, you know, Google mixed use and it says it should be live, work, and play. Like, that's what it should be. And it should be three or more significant revenue-producing uses, what it says. Where I, you know, and it's also supposed to support the people who live there, capture their traffic, which we're, you're not capturing any traffic here. Like, everybody's just going to like drive out of the community. And, and it's also supposed to draw people into the community as well. So I, I, I just, we are not ready to have this conversation, in my personal opinion. There's a lot more work that needs to happen. A lot more thought needs to go into this layout. And just not, I mean, it's just homes, in my opinion. When I look at it, I'm like, that, that, this is an opportunity to have like a highlighted feature in our community. This is a great piece of real estate. Let's do something amazing. And to me, this, this isn't it.
Thank you. Any other council members wish to speak? Councilmember Raskin?
Thank you, Mayor. I think sometimes when I'm, I've had this discussion with staff before, but it seems like there should be some sort of percentage in the, based under the acreage that you're dealing with, you're dealing with a hundred acres. What's the percentage of mixed use in that that's going to be commercial? Because it just seems like we're getting less and less and less every time I see it. So mixed use to me is, the same thing I think Deputy Mayor is saying, is that you should be able to get out of your house, go to a restaurant, go to a grocery store, get what you need without having to get in your car. That's what mixed use is for. So I'm with you. I, I would like to see something better if it's possible, but I don't know how far in the game we are.
Any other councilmembers? Mr. Marx? Yes. Councilmember Cooper?
If anybody else doesn't want to speak first before me, I'm going to make a motion.
Ms. Zarris?
Sir?
Are you wanting, are you wanting to speak, Mr. Ms. Zarris?
Well, and, you know, I understand where the, where the council is and I just want to make sure that the council is aware that the, these two items are, and remind you that these two items are part of the closing contingencies related to the sale of this property. And I recognize that City Council has to look at it from, in it, wearing a different hat. But I just would be remiss if I didn't remind you that a delay, a significant delay in these items probably would end up in there being issues related to the sale of the Stevens Plantation property and related to the bonding associated with that. So that's one of the reasons why we've been, we've been trying to bring this in front of you and so that we can have a decision at this point. So if you are, if you want more time to look at it, I get that. If you're looking for a redesign of the, of the project, the way it's been presented, then it would depend on how long that takes to get done and to address it. So, thank you, man.
Mr. Councilmember Trace?
Thank you. So just from some of the councilmember's comments, it seems like we designed this Stevens Plantation Connector back in 2017 to fill a need with the school district and whatnot. But based on this layout, which I think is, is different and somewhat better than the Galleria layout, you know, do we need this east-west connector all the way through? Especially if it's the city that's having to foot the bill for it. I know we have the future police and fire complex there and we need to make sure we have some connectivity out to Canoe Creek, out to Budinger. But, you know, is that something we can do to help massage this plan and recoup some of that acreage into this and then still have connectivity?
This sucks. Marx?
Because it seems, it seems like a road that no one wants to pay for, that no one really benefits from. So I'm just trying to kind of bridge that gap if, if this is going that way.
Yeah. We.
Go ahead, Mr. Marx.
A couple of issues that have come up that I, that I should probably address. The first is by the concern about thirty-two-foot lots. We were, just, just to be clear, that, and we had.
Thirty-two-foot lots, buildable lots, thirty-two-foot lots.
Right. But just to be clear, that, we, we had explored that. We thought that that would be more consistent with the density needed to make a good mixed-use project. But having looked at it closer, we just don't think it's viable with the parking requirements. Because if we were going to do those types of units, we'd have to have two and a half parking spaces per each of those units that would be off-site. So it's just not really feasible to do a narrower unit. So we, all of these houses are going to have to have a two-car garage in order to meet the parking requirements. Because we've got to be able to get four spots in the driveway and garage to then only need to add half a spot per unit off-site, off, off the lot. So I just want to be clear, we will not be doing lots of that size. And, and we did, we did mention that and we were exploring it. And we've heard you loud and clear. In addition to that, we've looked at the parking requirements and it's just not feasible. As far as the road connectivity goes, you know, this is, we've all been flying, trying to get this done quickly with the goal of getting a closing done before the end of the year. And so, and as part of our purchase agreement, there was a specific obligation to sign the development agreement or the mobility fee agreement that required construction of that road. I agree with Councilmember Trace's comments, and I think I'm hearing this from others, that it's probably not the best alignment. We could probably do more with Fertig Road. And it would be a win-win for both of us, to be honest. It would reduce any impact fee contribution from the city and it would give us more developable land. And on top of that, just looking at the road network and what's really available. from a connectivity standpoint at the city, we think Fertig Road is a better road that ultimately has connectivity further east. Because where we currently end a four-lane road for this Stevens Plantation Connector, it, uh, it is across the street from a residential entry to a KB, to the KB property. And we've been concerned that that's probably not a, a great traffic pattern to send all that traffic through that KB subdivision. But if you look at what the city has as far as right-of-way to go further east, we do believe that Fertig Road is the better option.
Okay.
So, I mean, it, it's a challenge. We all know what's going on. Um, but I do think that that's a win-win for everybody. Um, as far as, as the, the, the plan and the quality and the mixed use, I, I, I just wanna address that a little bit. I know it's not meeting everybody's vision of what they hope for, for this property. And, um, and I understand that everybody wants to see, um, you know, a classic, large, mixed-use, um, what I think I'm hearing from you guys, project. In light of where this is, and, and I hate to put on COVID, but truly, in light of the total uncertainty about other uses with COVID, I just don't know how, I, I wouldn't wanna stand in front of you and say that we're gonna do something so much more and just misrepresent what the reality is. What we've done is, is presented a plan to you that is financially feasible. That does have some elements of mixed use. It's not perfect. There's no doubt, it's not perfect. But with the reality of where this, this property is, the reality of where we are in the market with uncertainty about commercial uses, uh, guys, this is as, as, as good as we can do. And, and, and I feel committed to the mixed-use concept. I've stood before you and told you that we wanna do that and we plan to make the investment in the mixed-use concept. But, um, but I think if you're looking for, I don't know, what's a great example? Um, what's the one over in Tampa that's, uh, anyway, I, I, you know, I, I just don't know that that's financially feasible at the moment.
Okay. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Marks?
Um, yeah, Chris, Christie would like to add a little bit.
Okay, Christie?
Good evening, and Christie Barrera with Height Design. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the mixed use as well and the timing of that. I know the deputy mayor said, you know, there's a lot of roof, rooftops and the non-residential seems to be in the later phases. Typically, you do need those rooftops to support the non-residential areas and that was the reason for them being in a little bit later phases. I would also, um, suggest that you guys look outside of this project, not just this one specifically. Um, in this Stevens North project, we are showing two neighborhood centers. Um, one is five acres, the other one is almost two acres, um, to have non-residential uses. Also, just north of Stevens Plantation Connector, um, is the proposed police and fire station. So you will have civic uses there as well. And again, the school is just west of us. So there are a lot of different uses in this area. They may not be directly on our project, but surrounding, we do have a good amount of uses. Our plan also shows open space between, um, Stevens Connector Road and the gas line easement. Uh, we think that that will be a great amenity for the community, the residents that live there, as well as people that are coming to the shopping plaza and the, the children at school and their families. So we think that will be a great bonus as well. Um, you all also talked about a signal being warranted. Um, again, that will come with more detailed planning and obviously, when those plans are done, at the time a signal is warranted, that will be put in. So that's not a question either. Um, on the trails plan, I don't know if we can go back to that, but that plan did show the existing eight-foot trail on Budinger Avenue that we will be connecting to. Um, we're showing a ten-foot path on the south side of Stevens Plantation Connector. That was part of the engineered plans for that road that the city previously did. Um, there's also planned to be a eight-foot trail along Canoe Creek, um, that's in the city plans. And so those are kind of all external to our project. Internal, like I mentioned previously, and Andre did as well, um, we have six-foot sidewalks as well as five-foot bike lanes. So there will be multimodal access for pedestrians to walk to the non-residential, children to bike to school, um, you know, easy access again to police and fire if needed. So, we do think that, um, there is quite a bit of connectivity internal to the project as well as external to, um, you know, different uses. So, you mentioned also live, work, and play. Um, you know, obviously, we have three hundred and forty-eight units we're proposing to construct here, but it is adjacent to the elementary school. So you may have teachers living here, you may have firefighters or policemen living here, um, depending on what goes into the non-residential area, if it's a bank or something like that. Um, people that work in those places could live in this community as well. So, we do think that there will be internal capture for the traffic because of all the uses that I just mentioned. That you live in this community, you're not gonna have to get onto new, onto Canoe Creek or Budinger if you want to go to any of these areas. So I believe there will be a lot of internal capture and it won't just be for cars. Like I mentioned, um, you know, you can ride your bike and walk to many of these uses. Um, so Eric also mentioned the two-car garages, so I think that item has been put to rest. But, you know, lots of uses in the surrounding area. We think this will complement the existing residential in the area. Again, we are proposing, um, single-family detached as well as two, um, two types of townhomes. So there will be multiple different product types that we think, um, will entice multiple buyers to this area. And we think it would be a great, uh, project for the city. Um, so those are all the comments that I have. I don't know if Eric has any follow-up comments that he would like to add.
Uh, no, again, I, this is a, this is a tough spot to be in because this approval then triggers a closing. I, um, you know, the, the question about the warranting of the traffic signal is a really interesting one, just to try to give you a little bit of our perspective. Typically, we're not gonna close on a deal like this until we've got construction plans approved. And at that phase, we're gonna know what our costs are, top to bottom. We would have a full traffic impact analysis. We would know whether traffic lights were warranted. We would know a lot more about this project. And while I know you don't really care so much about our risk, I mean, that's, that's kind of the risk we're taking closing at this point. And I hope you'll take that into consideration when you're kind of evaluating what's been presented and where we stand. In order to get the first project started out here, I believe we'll be in front of you at least one, if not two more times, on each section of this project. Um, so this is, and I hate to say this, this is that risk, but this is the not, not the last bite at this apple. So, that's all I gotta say.
So we hope we answered most of your concerns, but again, if you have any other questions, we're happy to go into more detail.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we do not do the roadway extension uh, for impact fee credits back to the developer AVEX. I make that motion?
So you're moving that we-
Do not.
Not approve resolution number twenty-twenty-two-seventy-nine R, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do I have a second?
Do you wanna ask a question about that? Mr. Cooper, do you believe that, that connection road is re- required? Do you, you know, want to see that happen and you just don't think that the city could, should issue impact fee credits for it? Uh, we need a little more dialogue around that.
All right, a little more dialogue. We should not elect to give the credits back to the developer. Um, if the developer is, he wants to pay for that road, let him do it. I'm not against him doing whatever he wants to do. But at this point, I don't think the citizens of St. Cloud should pay for that four-lane road that's gonna come across through Stevens Plantation in their subdevelop, subdev- development here. Let them pay for it themselves. If they want it, or let's let this Fertig Road go through, whatever they wanna do and let them get it in and out. Most developers always do that. I'm just saying, I don't wanna pay for impact fee credits back to AVEX. I'm against that.
Mr. Menzares?
And, and just if I just may put a little more context on that and just so for clarification purposes. The connector road, as I think a couple of folks have mentioned already, began based on direction provided by, by the city council. And as part of the adoption of the plan and to get the, and to have the road built. So, if this, if the, if Mr. Cooper and what the council's saying right now is they wanna change that direction and do not, do not want the city to, to, to build that connector road, then, uh, we essentially could, uh, work on a revision to this mobility fee agreement and not, uh, require it as part of, uh, of, of, of the transaction. Uh, Mr., uh, obviously, Mr. Marks and the AVEX would have to, would have to agree to that. And then the road could go away and, um, I think maybe Mr. Anderson could comment about this, but they could work through the, uh, with the Fertig Road alternative. But again, I remind everybody that the multi-road connector came from a previous action of the city council regarding moving forward with that project. And that's how, that's what's, that's the, the reason why we're sitting here today is because we were following that initial direction and the design provided by Osceola Engineering for the construction of this connector.
Thank you. Uh, I have a motion. I'd like to either have a second before. I know I'll have more discussion if, if I can get a second.
I'll second it, and I'm-
Okay, I have a second from Councilmember Matheny, and for the denial. At this point, Ms. Matheny, would you like to speak to this?
Um, so, I like the idea of freeing up the layout, um, to AVEX to try to make it work, you know, for everything that we're, we're wanting to get done. I, I wanted to ask Mr. Cooper about his motion, so, and this happens, you know, like with our utilities, right? Like if a developer is going to put in an eight-inch line, that's what they need to serve their development. And then we say, we, but we need a twelve and we'll pay for the differential. Like, if they get done and they design it and they're just like, all we need is a two-lane road, but we, as the city, say we want a four-lane road, um, would you, is, is your motion to, would you be open to that kind of conversation? I, I don't think we should pay for the whole thing either. Like, I have a real problem with us paying for the whole thing and I know we are where we are, but it seems like we're always kind of working on a small amount of information, not a lot of detail. Um, so then as we're just getting further along, but I'm just thinking, I don't wanna end up, I like interconnecting things and so I certainly don't wanna end up with this, with an undersized um, road either that, like, you know, if they come and they have, but we need documentation and things that show like what their traffic needs are.
Councilmember Raskin?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think that the reason that road was there is because you got a dead area lined in there. You can't build a house on it. So that was the thought of putting a road there. Um, I'm not, I'm not strapped to the idea that we have to connect, um, Budinger to, um, Canoe Creek. I like the idea of Fertig Road. If you look at the future, um, La Hoop's property, Fertig Road, we, we approved it. It was gonna go through there. And if you keep going down farther, there's another piece of property we approved. Um, so Fertig Road could eventually go all the way out to Michigan, um, if not farther. Uh, actually, to Old Hickory Tree. It could go all the way to Old Hickory Tree. So, I'm open to that idea. Um, in, I, I really wish there was more commercial in that area. I mean, I just drove down it the other day. I saw one place that was, um, up for leased all the way down, um, to the south on, uh, Vermont. So, it, it seems like there's commercials still making it even through COVID, but I'm, I'm open to the idea. And I think, I guess as council, are we, are we squashing a project? Are we trying to go, hey, we're willing to work with you. Let's go ahead and move that road down to Fertig. We'd be open to that idea. But again, I don't think that we should, we should be paying. I've never had a developer come to me and say, hey, look, let's connect these two roads. You're gonna pay for it. Um, I would assume he wants a back entrance and a, and a forward entrance to it, so. But I, I'm agreeing with, um, the deputy mayor that if we wanna widen it, you know, we should be open to that conversation. So, I'm just curious. It seems like we're going around in circles here. I just wanna really know what, what council's thinking about each one of these things we're talking about. Seems like everybody has a different idea. I don't know if we go one-to-one and say, because we're, we're asking the developer to do a bunch of things, but I'm not sure we're being very specific about, this is what we want, this is what we want to move forward, if we wanna move forward.
Right. Councilmember Tris?
Um, so just to me, I mean, this mobility fee agreement was a part of this Galleria project like a year before I was on council and it was all, always part and parcel with the whole transaction going through. So, it's a bit of move in the cheese right now. But that doesn't mean that we can't figure out an amicable solution. You know, we probably spent a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars designing this road for a need at the time, but things have changed. I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend two-point-three million dollars on building the road that is a four-lane road that deadends into, you know, two dead ends on either side and then you have to make turns to get all the way around. So, you know, I, I just wanna us to take a, a different holistic approach and, and another look at this of, how do we connect A to B? Get something that's, um, good for the city, um, something that, you know, is cohesive with the development instead of just these, these kind of connector roads to nowhere.
Thank you. Mr. Menzares, can you help us here?
Mr. Mayor, can, this is Andre Maye.
Yes, you may. Mr. Menzares, speak.
Thank you. Um, Ms., uh, Mr. Menzares had mentioned my name a minute ago. Um, so, if I can just, um, respond to the, um, Fertig Drive topic. And that is, um, I, while this discussion wasn't going on, I've been having conversations with our Public Works Director of whether or not an alternative, um, roadway design could be considered. And that would be a developer road from Canoe Creek over to Budinger by virtue of using Fertig Road. So, at this point, the developer has already indicated that they're building Fertig Road from Canoe Creek as part of their main entrance. And then it would connect to what we now indicate as the Stevens Plantation North, uh, Connector Road. And, um, that portion from Fertig Road over to Budinger could, um, also be a developer road if Mr. Marks agrees to that as part of his entire development. And that would be, I guess, a two-lane, um, roadway similar to Fertig Drive. And then I guess to, to Deputy Mayor's, Deputy Mayor Matheny's point about upsizing if we wanted that segment of that roadway to be upsize or larger, then I guess we could pay for that difference in cost. Just something to throw on the table for, for consideration.
I would certainly be in favor of that. Mr. Menzares?
Well, um, I'm trying to logistically figure, figure out the path here. Uh, the difficulty is that the, the mobility fee credit agreement, as Mr. Marks pointed out and we've advised before, is part of the, the agreement between the Stevens Plantation DSD and AVEX Homes. Um, it's a condition of closing, uh, so if we are going to move in a different direction with regard to the transportation improvements related to this project and the ability for the developer to get mobility fee credits, then we would have to work on that, or at least essentially amend that agreement, uh, or the parties would have to agree that, uh, that, that, to basically remove that portion and that contingency. So, that is obviously, that, that is something we'd have to work on. Um, so I guess the frank question I'd have to answer, there are two, there are two, uh, from, and this would just basically be from a timing perspective. There are two contingencies to close that have, um, that have led us to trying to get this project moving forward so that we can close, that's so that the Stevens Plantation DSD can close on the property before the end of the year. The one is the mobility fee agreement and the second is the conceptual master plan approval. So, if the council is, as a whole, is inclined to go in the direction you're talking about and is okay with removing the connector road piece as a requirement of this development, then I think we could quickly work on an amendment with AVEX Homes to the purchase and sale contract- To the purchase and sale contract to address that as a closing contingency. And quickly have to have a, uh, couldn't do it tonight, but we could have a meeting of the Stevens Plantation DSD Board to approve that amendment to the contract and remove that as a contingency. Remember that contingency is important thing because. Yes, it gives AVEX, AVEX Homes the ability to get mobility fee credits, but to get the mobility fee credits, they have to do something fairly expensive and that's they have to build a road. So, um, if, if we remove that obligation from them, I think we probably can work that out with AVEX Homes because they would no longer be obligated to build that road. Uh, at least they might be obligated to work on another transportation system than based on what we've talked about today. So I guess frankly, the more important issue is. Does the council believe that it can work on the conceptual master plan in, in relatively short order? And if we do, then my suggestion to you is that. Uh, the council, uh, agreed to meet again very soon, maybe next week, uh, in a special meeting. We also have a dependent special district meeting, uh, so that we can deal with the amendment. And again, the reason for the short timeframe is to. Try to keep this project, the closing of this project on, uh, on track. Uh, so that we can address this issue and try to, uh, uh, move forward with the, uh, the transaction related to selling the Stevens Plantation North portion.
I guess part of our questions is, is Mr. Marks. Open to moving in that direction?
We certainly are, are. More than happy to work with this, with the city on this. I'd be remiss if I didn't say I'm a little frustrated that. We signed a, a purchase agreement that spelled out precisely what we needed to do. We've spent. A ton of money. Complying with what that purchase agreement said to do. We've worked height, literally night and day, uh, Christie's got a smile on her face. So that we could try to get this done for this hearing. And it really seems like we're back at the beginning. Having gotten that off my chest, I do think this is an opportunity for a win-win for both of us. I am inclined to agree that the road as a four-lane road. Dead ending into the KB subdivision and then where it's currently dead ending is really not a great use of, of city funds. Um, it's absolutely not necessary for our project. And, um, we could certainly redesign the project in a way that would make Fertick the connection. That said. I think Mr. Manzares really asked the key question though. Which is, are we so far apart on this conceptual plan that to continue spending money. On this project does not make sense. And I can't ask you to commit one way or the other today. But if the sense of the board is that we want to see a plan that is completely different than what's presented. Then I think the question about the road becomes moot. So. My answer is yes. I've seen this as a partnership all along. We will work with you. Uh, to try to solve that road problem, to reduce any impact fees. And if you want a four-lane road, we'll work on an impact fee agreement that just covers the additional lanes. But I do think we need to get some clear indication as to whether we're appropriately using our time and money on this concept.
Mr. Councilmember Trace.
Um, so to, to sum up a, a couple of Mr. Marks points, I, you know, I, I do feel this is a live, work, play type of design. There is a commercial layout, there is a, a school adjacent, there is good park and open space connectivity with. Trails and multiple corridors. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good plan. Um, to me, it's the, that east-west connection and just making sure that some of those master elements that, you know, were, were set up. Three, four years ago, you know, some of the parameters have changed. Um. I, I, we, I just feel like we have to get this thing. Moving. Um, I, I personally, other than I have a comment about the stub alleys. Um, which I can bring up at a different point, but, um, you know, I think this is, this is. A, a, a good enough plan for us to move forward. Um, we just have to figure out what we're doing with that road and how it gets built. Um, uh, without, you know, using impact fee credits.
Councilmember Raskew.
Mayor, can I ask Eric to bring back up the plan and show that road that's connecting to Fertick that he had in there, but also existing running from Buddinger over to Canoe Creek? Is it possible to do that, Eric?
Um, yes, I think you have to give, uh, Christie the, the control. There may be E, oh, I think she's got it.
So it seems like that road is there. We're just requesting that. That there are citizens pay for the road going straight across and you're not really in agreement with that anyways. I would be open to the idea. I mean, you would have to curb that a little bit better probably, but. It seems like Fertick Road, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but we approved La Hoop's property that have Fertick Road through. We approved the Jowers property farther down. Um. To go through Fertick Road. I mean, that seems like the master plan, um, I mean, I'm, I'm. I, that's what I'm looking for. I would love more commercial, but it doesn't seem like I'm going to get that. Um, but I, I would be open to the idea of it, um, going to Fertick Road. I'm not a big fan of the mobility fees at this point. Is that something you could work with or?
Yes.
Is there something else that you're in need of? Or is there something else other council wants out of this?
No, I, can you hear me? I can't tell.
Yes.
Uh, no, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, both as, you know, on a. As just a citizen, I think if you look at that math, it's a little challenging to look at that four-lane road going into the subdivision. Knowing that you've got better connectivity further south, uh, all the way through to Fertick. And I think we're going to have to really fast, uh, revise the plan and try to show Fertick there as, as the connection and, and we'd be wide open to that.
Okay. Is there something, I mean, I don't think they're going to get a light there anytime soon. Is it just like have turn lanes and stuff off to your property and?
Yeah, I, again, I mean, that's the major risk in this deal is there's going to be off-site requirements that a traffic impact analysis is going to show. We are buying this land from, from you, sitting in a different capacity without knowing the answers to those things at this point. It's, it's very much a risk, but just with the timing, it's impossible to nail all those issues down.
Okay. I would like to hear from the rest of council if it's possible, what their concerns are at this point.
Well, I'd certainly like to see us move forward with what you're suggesting here. We have said on this property ever since I've been here and before. It's cost the city all kinds of money. You got the bond company that, uh. I'm sure is, uh, pretty stressed out over this. Uh. Uh, there has to be. Something that we can agree on and I, I, I like the way we're moving it and, and I don't think the connector road there. Uh, that was a selling point Galleria brought to us. But, uh, I, I think, uh, you're certainly on track here. I'd be in support of. You know, what's moving forward, but we, we can't. Keep bouncing this developer around and making them spend thousands, thousands of dollars and then. Keep changing our mind.
Councilmember Matheny.
Oh, I mean, I kind of. Said all my points was, you know, I didn't like the mobility fee agreement. I don't really love the layout personally. Um, it sounds like I'm in the minority here. Um, you know, I didn't like, I just had my call with the developer yesterday and that's when they told me 32 feet. So some things happened between yesterday and today. Um, so. Um. You know, I. I think the Fertick makes more sense. I, I definitely don't want to. Be super short-sighted and, and say. It's, we don't need a four-lane road. It's just a two-lane road. I mean, maybe for connectivity. I'm not a traffic transportation engineer. But if we're looking at making this a connectivity corridor, that either it might still have to be a mobility fee agreement, but. I think it should be the, um, the upsizing type agreement versus us paying the whole lion's share. Um. I, I would, I wish we could have some bigger lot estates. I mean, you know, there's not too many communities around that have large lots and Stevens Plantation is one that has larger lots. Sure be nice to have some bigger product. Um, you know, and again, I just feel like, you know, when I saw the master plan, I was like, geez, it's all houses, you know? Like, you know, with the different person that was going to buy this that, that we initially selected. Um, you know, we had hotels and, and various things inside of here, um, that would be revenue generating, um, for the city definitely, so. I mean. I'd like to see what they come back with, um, and I'd just like to see some more creativity with, with this design. It's my two cents.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cooper.
Ms. Lynette, I, I do agree with you. I don't, I'm not crazy about the layout. Uh, I'd like to have more square footage of commercial. It, it's. It's, it's just a grocery store and that's about it. A big grocery store and that's about going to be there. But, uh, in the smaller lots of 30 some feet, I absolutely say no. So I've got a couple of complaints right there and then the, that thorough pay fair of the road, I. I just don't see the citizen should have to pay anything for that. That's the developer. That's his part of the share that he's going to have to do. For road ingress and egress. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Mr. Manzares, do we need to just continue both these items until next week or whenever we can meet next?
Well, right now you have a motion on the table to deny essentially that item. So yes, if you're not going to go in that direction, uh, then we would, we would ask. That the, the, the council continue these meetings and that the, there be these, these items, that there be a special meeting set for next week so that we could. Hopefully keep this on track. The, the, based on my discussion, as I said earlier, I think our, our. Proposed plan would be that you would. Uh, uh, we would go back, we'd actually have a Stevens Plantation dependent special district meeting also and ask to amend the contract to remove the. Mobility fee portion of, uh, of the agreement, of the contract. And then we could work on the, uh, plan and the, uh, the road connectivity with, uh, with, uh, AVEX to be reviewed and approved by the city council.
Councilmember Cooper, are you willing to withdraw your motion and agree to a continuance? Councilmember Cooper.
You're muted.
You're muted, Mr. Cooper.
Sorry. As long as when we do this with the DSD that the. As far as I'm concerned, the citizens should never have to pay for any of that roadway.
That'd be another discussion then, would it not, Mr. Manzares?
Yes, sir. That would be part of the, yeah, we're not, yeah, that, that would be part of the discussion based on what we come back with, yes.
All right, well, I guess. I can, I guess I can always go back and after the DSD, the next meeting, I'll, I'll make this same motion again, so I'm going to be at the same place where I'm at. Unless this developer has made some changes and these 34, 32 and a half feet or four feet or whatever they are, they're too small. Not, not far as I'm concerned, so.
Uh, we, and we've heard you loud and clear on that. I'm not sure if you can hear me, but we've heard you. We, we understand there, there won't be that small of a lot. As I said, everything will have, uh, our garage.
We need some, we need some largers, uh. Commercial too, besides just a, a big, large grocery store or whatever. That's, that's not enough to me. I thought it was bigger than that to start with, but maybe if it wasn't, we need to get it bigger.
Well, Mr. Manzares, do I need a motion for a continuance of resolution 2020 279R or? What do I need, what do we need to do?
Well, first, I think if we're going to make that motion, that we'd like to see a motion to continue this resolution and these, both of these items. Uh, to, uh, a special meeting for next week, if that's okay.
I'll make that motion.
Let me clarify the motion, are. Are we going to, can we make a motion that just encompasses both item number three and four?
Yes, sir. And, but I would ask that if it's okay with the council, we, and I guess I should ask the city clerk and the city manager, but to meet, uh. Uh, something, you know, next week. And there are, this is a, a month where there's five Thursdays, so you do not have anything scheduled for next Thursday night.
Mr. Manzares, are we talk, I, I think the meeting you're talking about next week is going to be a DSD meeting, correct?
Well, that would be, we would also have a DSD meeting, sir. Yes.
Council meeting as well.
Yes, we have both.
Uh, let, and again, I, we are fully on board with this plan. I just am looking at, at Christie who's, because I, I think everybody's going to want to see a new plan. And a new, um. And a new layout and everything. And I just don't know if physically, we'll try, Dan, but I, I, you know, we've asked a lot of them already.
I understand.
All right, so we have a motion for a continuance of items three and four.
Yes, sir.
Special meeting if they can pull it together.
Yes, sir.
For next Thursday from Councilmember Cooper. Do I have a second? Second with Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, we please call the roll.
Mayor, that would be, um, October 29.
Okay.
Next Thursday. Councilmember Trace.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
You're muted.
Wasn't I, like.
There you go.
Councilmember Cooper.
Hi.
Councilmember Askew.
Hi.
Mayor Blackwell.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Marks. Uh, thank you for your incredible patience and cooperation and. Uh, I'll be praying for you and Christine that you guys can pull this off.
We, we. And, and look, we know this is a challenging, uh, effort, a lot of different hats being worn and appreciate everybody's. Cooperation to try to get this thing moved to completion.
Well, thank you very much. Madam Clerk. Deputy Clerk, could you please read item number five?
Discussion and possible action regarding appointments in committee finance, committee vacancies for planning commission, finance committee and metro plan, community advisory committee.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, this, um, first, uh, vacancy is for the planning commission. This is for alternate number two position and we have two applicants. Alternate two is an at-large appointment.
Okay.
And again, we'd like to have nominations for the three boards that we have with one motion.
Oh, for all three?
Yes. So, um, the planning commission is our first one.
I'd like to recommend Dawn Grigsby. I nominate her.
I'll second.
With the planning commission. Thank you. We have a second. Do you have any other nominations? Then let's move to the finance committee.
Finance committee is, uh, seat four vacancy and that is for Councilmember Askew's seat. And, um, we have. Four applicants, um, that are listed and you'll see their choices there.
Okay. Mr. Askew, Councilmember Raskew.
To nominate Boyd Hogland.
Okay, and the next. One is, um, Metro Plan Community Advisory Committee. And that is the seat for St. Cloud, uh, for the municipality. There's, uh, two seats for the, both cities and the, in the county. And you'll see the three applicants that are. Have submitted applications.
So, but, but we're only nominating one vacant seat, is that correct?
Yes, one vacant seat and that's an at-large appointment.
I'd like to nominate Joel Davis. And who made the second? Councilmember Matheny. We have a second. Do we have any other nominations for this?
Those are the only three seats that we have at this moment. So we just need one motion.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that has wanted to speak to this?
I have no one in the audience or no one online for this item.
Thank you. Then, uh, I assume we can ask for the question? Call the roll?
Yes, I'd like one, one motion for all three of these appointments.
I'll make the motion that we appoint. Dawn Griggs, which is the planning commission, that we approve. Mr. Askew's appointment of Boyd Hogland, is that correct?
Correct.
And then Joel Davis for the Metro Plan Community Advisory Committee. I'll make that a motion. I have a second with Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, we please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny.
Hi.
Councilmember Cooper.
Hi.
Hi.
Councilmember Askew.
Hi.
Councilmember Trace.
Hi.
Mayor Blackwell.
Hi.
Motion carries five-zero.
Wow. Mr. Manzares, what do you have for us?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have one item to report on to you. As you recall, about a year ago, uh, the city council authorized us to challenge an, an, an order issued by the Board of Zoning and Adjustments relating to the approval of a special exception, uh, at a property located at eight sixteen Maryland Avenue. We did file that petition, and we are pleased to report that the appellate court, uh, agreed with the city's petition and then, uh, essentially overruled the Board of Adjust, Board of Zoning Adjustments granting that special exception. So, uh, we just wanted to report that to you so that you are aware of it. Any questions happening to it?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Sturgeon.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Askew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing other than thanks, uh, the water department for taking care of some of the citizens on some of the state streets with the overflow challenges, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny.
Kudos to Mr. Manzares and team. I know that was something we all, um, were really vested in on that, that decision, but, um, I don't have anything. Thank you to my fellow council members for this, uh, good debate today. So I think, I think we made some good, good moves, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Sturgeon, what about the, um, down at the lakefront, at the ponds that they're there? I know you've, uh, drained them and lowered them down, and it seems like the, to me, it looks like they've gone back up again, and we've got, uh, what, another eight or ten days left or whatever before the contract or the, uh, where we could do the drainage again? Is it a possibility that could we get them drained again, lowered, before any more rains comes again?
Mr. Cooper, uh, as you know, our permit does go until the thirtieth of this month. Public Works is monitoring that, and I think it's their plan to pump that down again, according to the email I had got today.
Okay, so they're gonna, you're gonna, they plan on doing it pretty quickly or get it down?
Uh, Naseem, are you on?
Yes, sir, this is Naseem, Public Works Director. May be recognized.
Yes, you may, Mr. Naseem.
Uh, yes, sir, I, uh, the city manager is correct, uh, so our southwest, uh, excuse me, south, south, uh, floor of our management district permit is, uh, up, uh, until, allows us to pump until October thirtieth, and, um, when we get closer to that, uh, we're continuing to pump till then, and when we get closer, if we still need to continue pumping, we will ap, uh, apply to extend the permit to continue pumping.
Till the next week or two, they would be out there pumping?
Yes, sir, until we reach the limit at, uh, the height, and as, and, uh, if we don't reach the limit, uh, we will apply to extend the permit, sir.
Okay, and how often can we get that, those permits, or is it, it's not a permanent permit, right?
Negative, sir, it's a, it's on a as-and basis, uh, uh, based on south for our management, uh, application.
Okay, so, Naseem, you'll keep a look ahead, and if it goes back higher and we, it's raining again, that you'll kinda keep ahead, and so we can get a permit and get it drained again if we have to.
I just, sir.
I appreciate that, thank you. Last question. Bill Sturgeon, could you tell me about, I've got a couple of people that have complaining down at the, uh, New York Avenue between Tenth and Thirteenth Street? They've got some, some of these trees, the oak trees, the new ones, they haven't been trimmed or cut back. There was some of these cars, when they park there, they're getting scratched when they pull in and back out. Their trees are lower than the.
Yes, sir.
Cars are. Do we get them trimmed?
I'll, I'll ask the deputy city manager to direct, um, the arborists to go out and take a look tomorrow and do any trimming if we need to.
Yeah, if they could just trim it a li, um, you know, a little bit, I mean, just pull it, pull it back up a little bit and shape it a little bit. It hasn't been shaped or even looked like it's, uh, kinda wooly.
Thank, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Yeah, that goes back to our pride and ownership initiative we need to do.
I had a couple of prides that were upset about it, so that's why.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Councilmember Trace.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, hope everyone can watch the presidential debate tonight, and then just remember to get out and vote early and vote often. Thanks.
That would be nice. Would like to announce that there will be another food distribution at my church, Cornerstone Family Church, on October the twenty-eighth, on a Wednesday at one PM again, uh, at twenty-nine twenty-five Canoe Creek Road. I'd like to thank, uh, all of the police and, uh, the rec volunteers that came out and helped with that distribution. We had hundreds of people come through, we gave out over eleven-hundred boxes of food, um, and we'll be having another distribution for our community again on the twenty-eighth. With that, it brings us to our information section and reports section. Monday, October the nineteenth, uh, through Sunday, November the first, there will be only, early voting at the community center, uh, in St. Cloud, as well as in the Narcusi Community Center. We have added a DSD meeting and a city council meeting for Thursday, possibly October the twenty-ninth. Tuesday, November the third is general election day, uh, it says from seven AM to seven PM at all polling locations. Wednesday, November the eleventh, city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Thursday, November the twelfth, there will be a city council swearing-in ceremony. Twelve PM till noon. Thursday, November the twenty-second, there will be a city council meeting, uh, at six-thirty PM. Remind you of war, of reports that are available, warrants list number twenty, Stephen Nash also was presented the employee of the month award for the month of June. Congratulations, Stephen. John Luzzi was presented the employee of the month award for the month of August. Congratulations, John. Shania Shelton was presented the employee of the month award for the month of September. Congratulations, Shania. With that, do we have no other information? We are adjourned. Thank you so much for your patience and your, uh, debate and participation. God bless you all.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff.
Thank you, Dave.